I'm going to call the meeting of the Manchester Planning Board to order. Sorry, thank you for your patience. The first item on the agenda is to acknowledge correspondence. Yeah, roll call, thank you. George Brewster.
Yeah.
Chris Alney.
Here.
Sarah Craig present, Sue Philbert, Mary Foley, and Peter Morton's on Zoom. Laura Tenny is absent. Thank you. The first order of business is to acknowledge correspondence. We had two correspondents about CST noise from Elizabeth Thomas. I think you have to join with the audio. Not just mute it. Okay. Thanks. Two correspondents from Elizabeth Thomas on 115 about CST noise. We had a correspondence from Christine Delicio about the posting or our failure to post the meeting two weeks ago. If you guys can mute yourselves, please, if you're online. We had correspondence from Lorraine Iavoni on two on 122 about MBTA zonings and one on draft regulations for Chapter 97 that are pending at the state. We had one from Lorraine Iavoni on January 23rd about the fire. And we had two from Lorraine Iavoni on January 28. I'm not sure what those were concerning. I failed to write that down. But we all received those. Were there any other correspondence, Mark?
Only one pertaining to the Form A.
Okay, so we'll.
One of the four.
Okay, we'll listen to that one. Any other correspondence that we didn't? We do have a special permit that was posted for about 7:00 Central at 6:30, but we are going to take the two, I hope, quick approval not required first, so apology to the 7:00 Central folks. So first I'll take 206 Summer Street and tonight we have Tom Sacks from Hanover Hancock, sorry, to tell us what is being proposed.
Thank you. So my name's Tom Sacks. I'm an engineer with Hancock Associates. I will be representing Mr. Tim Huff this evening for you. It is our proposed A&R plan. Mr. Huff is the owner of both these properties. This plan actually, our A&R has been done in the past for these lots. We're basically just seeking a revision, just through another A&R. The reason for the A&R is this is a very steep hillside. Water drains downhill into the wetland area. Because of the steepness of the hill, for our design purposes, we have located a dwelling along this property line. That's kind of the flattest area that we've been able to find that works with driveway regulations. So we have this dwelling along the property line here. We are proposing this green line up here as our new property line, and that will just comply with building setbacks. So Mr. Huff is just taking his property, adjusting the lines to fit for the dwelling. Any questions?
Does it affect? Since you're moving into the other property and taking land away from it, does it affect any access, frontage, or anything at all?
Nope.
It's still a viable lot?
Yep, still a viable lot. All your frontage for this larger property is right here, the bottom. Your access, we have an access easement. It's a common drive. They'll be running to the back of the property. And then all of our setbacks, they're okay.
And if you wouldn't mind, just on the right-hand side, there's no topographic anything on there, no grading at all. Where is this steep part start and stop?
So it's kind of hard. So this whole side of the property is just a hillside and it drains down towards the wetland. So it's pretty much all a three-to-one slope from the common drive, access easement, up to the top of the hill. We've basically pulled the dwelling going through conservation. We have looked into this area. We were running into resource areas through conservation, so we've pulled the dwelling out of the resource areas. And then we've just worked the driveway length to the maximum slope we can achieve, and then we just found our flat spot for the house.
Is it extensive cut in order to get a flat area for our?
Yes, there is extensive cut. We're filing for the special permit. I will note that for the driveway area down here, I can't really see grades, but this is more of a fill, and then this is our cut at the top, so in the end, our cut fill balances out. It's ideal, so you won't have trucks running down the streets, but we'll get into that.
For us tonight is just the lot line adjustment.
Yeah.
And then we will be, have the special permit, I believe, at the next meeting. So our lot line adjustment is really just about, does it have area?
Can you indicate where the house is going to be again?
Yeah, so it's right along this property line. So it's just somewhere in this area. I don't have the full size of the house, but it's just so that we have all of our setbacks to work. So this is our rear yard. We'll pull this in. I believe that's 40 foot, 50 foot setback, so. Yeah, it's just kind of located in this area. The driveway runs up from the access easement, and then we gradually, it sneaks around to the front of the house at the top here.
What about the other lot?
The other lot, the access drive, so we have a common drive here, and it just runs flat along this here.
The other house is going to be various.
Yeah, so the other dwelling will be in this area. And the driveway has already been pre-approved in the past.
And Mark, did you have a recommendation on this for us?
This can be.
Okay, and is this the one that we had a comment on? You said there was a comment on the A&R?
Oh, no, that was for the one that wasn't really a comment.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public who wanted to just ask a question or something on this? Any other questions from the board, Peter, or anybody? Okay. So I'll take a motion to endorse the plan of land for 206 Summer Street as approval not required.
No move.
Second. Any other discussion?
Does the plan indicate that this is not an endorsement of zoning?
That the note, yeah, I believe that is. Oh, the bottom underneath the sign off.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor? Peter?
Hi.
Thank you. Any post, extensions? Okay, unanimously approved. Great. Okay, I will sign the Mylar and get it, unless you have it.
That's fine.
I'll leave it at town clerks for you. Okay, sounds great. So maybe this is through him. And then the second piece that we'll just, we do have a public hearing in two weeks, or whatever our next meeting is, for the cut and fill. So we wanted to just have a site walk. Wondering about Wednesday afternoon at 4:00 PM. I think that worked for a couple people. How about Mary or Peter? Does that work for you? You can also arrange a second one if that doesn't work.
You can make it at 4:15?
4:15. Okay, or 4:30 is fine. Okay, let's plan on 4:30 at, 4:30 on Wednesday, for those who can make it. At the site.
If you want to post it, I won't be able to do that.
Okay. How about the following week? I can't do this rest of the week. Maybe you won't be here.
Go on. If I could just do it alone, I could just literally go there and see it. And understand what's going on.
And we have the cut and fill plan. So I don't know if any people saw Shannon's email. He's now putting the folders with plans down by the mailbox. So if you didn't get it, did you bring them up?
It's not there yet, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
You apprehended them?
Yes. Well, no, they're still in the office. He hadn't put them out yet.
So Sarah, don't schedule around me.
Well, we can't do it on Wednesday. We said we were going to try to post the sitewalks, so. Thursday's going to be a pouring down mess.
What about next week?
Next week.
It's going to be able to look at it on its own anyway.
Yeah. Monday is a holiday. What about Tuesday at 4:00?
Yeah, that works.
That's fine with me. Peter, does that work for you?
It does.
At 4:00 is okay.
Mary, do you think that works? Okay, we're going to post for the 18th at 4:00 o'clock. Great.
Just, are we? We stopped posting meeting pack? Don't have tonight's out there.
Yeah, Shannon's out. I forgot to get it posted, so.
Okay, let's stick to our. Okay, great. You'll be in touch about Tuesday to confirm Tuesday at 4:00 PM. At 206 Summer Street. Great, and we'll get everybody a, and I'm going to give you this one in case you're. And can he go walk? Is that okay if he goes out there?
Let me just follow up with the client just because it's his property.
Right.
To make sure.
Okay, or maybe you can just be in touch with him directly.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Our next A&R tonight is 2 Orchard Street. Orchard Lane?
Gateway Lane, Madam Chair, for the record, John, I'm representing Dr. Walker. And if I could, I could maybe bring out the plan, or if Mark, you want to bring out the plan, I can bring it up if you allow me to share.
Yeah. There you go.
All right, thank you. Let me see if this is something that you can see.
And John, you're from?
Consultants. We are the engineering firm that prepared the plan for Dr. Walker, who owns the property.
And what's the name of the firm?
It's Gateway Consultants. It's on the title block.
Okay, great, thank you.
So representing Dr. Walker, who is on the call tonight as well. Dr. Walker owns the property known as 2 Orchard Lane. And he's looking to subdivide. You can see this proposed line here that separates the existing house from the vacant portion, which would be Lot B here. Each of the, we do have the statement that the A&R statements require as far as the the local bylaw, as well as the certification that not conforming to zoning. We did meet with Mr. Resnick, and we also met with the building inspector Paul Orlando regarding the configuration. The Lot B would be 1.8 acres and remaining would be 3, I believe it's 3.8 acres as well over here. There's an existing driveway through driveway easement here, and that would be extended through the proposed Lot B to continue to serve Dr. Walker's house here. So the frontage for both lots are on Forrester Road, and this proposed easement would continue to serve Dr. Walker's as it does now. And both lots have the required area and frontage and setbacks, so can I answer any questions you might have?
Great. Mark, any comments?
No. The only thing is, we did get a request for an extension tonight's meeting because the 20 days.
Oh, yeah, okay, great.
So that's what I was going to mention earlier.
So yes, this was within the, we were due to see it, to hear this two weeks ago. And so thank you, the applicant, for being willing to work with us to get to our request extension. Thank you. So this complies with the requirements of an A&R.
Yes.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
That I should know the answer to, but I don't.
Turn it off, Neil. I gave you no warning. I already gave you your warning. Give me your remote.
With the frontage and the address not being on the road that we're considering frontage. Have we done that before?
I believe, if I could answer that, Madam Chair, that I believe that was 4911 purposes to access over here, and that's where the access actually takes place, is off Orchard Lane. And that's not my side. It must be another attendee. Okay, but in any event, so that's, I believe that's a 911 situation where the fire chief would like to see this labeled off of, because that's where it gains access from Orchard Lane.
I just know we had an issue with the prior A&R where they wanted access. Actually, just when we had okayed this one prior, the one before, the A&R before this, that they couldn't have frontage on a street that was behind them because they weren't accessing from there. I'm just confused how we can pick access road that doesn't have access.
So the way the law reads, it's a little odd, but this is how it is, that you have to have frontage on a road of suitable grades and widths to be able to access buildable portion of your land. However, you don't have to build it that way. You can come in a different way. So this lot has frontage on Forrester Road, and it is possible, although it might be expensive, to get from Forrester Road up to the buildable portion. Clearly, they, as John said, they plan on coming in through the easement in the back. So that's why it would get numbered differently. Numbering is not part of statute, but statute requires the point to look at, so. So, yeah.
And then, so the fire chief said that the 20-foot wide driveway was adequate? For two houses off of that drive?
If I could, Mark, maybe I can jump in. We're not looking to access the new lot after this. That would come in through its own frontage. They have, this lot has frontage on both Orchard and Forrester. As Mark points out, this is a possible area for a house right here. This is access and dry access. You know, it's not too bad here. It gets a little steep in this area here, but this is a possible area. The applicant prefers to be, obviously, in this area here would be the likely spot where someone would build the house. And that would access through here, through its own frontage.
Okay, so they have a separate driveway. Okay, thank you.
If you, even though the driveway exists, though, if you do use it as a common driveway, then that needs a special permit.
Click in's aware of that. Yeah, he's aware of that.
All right, other questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public on 2 Orchard Lane? If you, I don't, it's a little hard for me to see if anybody has any. Please just speak up. Okay, hearing none. Any other comments from board or questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the application by, for 2 Orchard Lane, prepared for Eric and Catherine and Walker by Gateway Consultants, dated January 2nd, 2025, scale 1 inch, 30 feet, as approval not endorsed as approval not required.
I moved.
Any other discussion? Any questions, Peter? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you. We'll have the Mylars for you at town clerk by Wednesday.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have, need to open the public hearing for 7 Central. The notice was held for tonight at 30 for an application submitted by AGEM, 7 Central LLC for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2 Table of Uses A5 of the zoning bylaw to allow the renovation of existing building to accommodate three residential units in existing to the existing restaurant use at 7 Central. So I think a roll call vote to open the hearing. Mary Foley?
Yes, but then I have a question.
Sue Philbert?
Yes.
Chris Alney?
Yes.
George Brewster?
Yes.
Peter Morton?
Yes.
Sarah Craig votes, yeah. Mary, go ahead.
Just like Mark had mentioned, the tension for 2 Orchard Lane, did we get an extension for 7 Central? Because they applied November of '24 and were past 65 days. So there needs to be a written request to the special.
Actually, I think that they had not, their application was not complete. They had not filed, they had not submitted a check. So it was actually, despite the fact that we had it, I believe it was not.
Yeah, it was stamped in by the clerk on January 9.
Yeah, so we did.
It wasn't.
That was why we had to delay.
Properly filed.
Yeah.
So it was stamped in by the clerk on.
But thank you. Okay, so tonight we have John Harding, and does he have somebody online?
I think probably AGEM.
Yeah.
Or also.
Actually, I don't have to make co-host because I have the presentation.
Yeah, if you would, that'd be great. Is it okay to stand here and speak?
Yeah.
Just as long as people can hear. Sometimes it's hard.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just trying. I lost my Zoom screen here. I don't know where everybody went. There was. Am I still in the meeting?
Okay.
I can see you, Sarah.
Yeah, okay. All right, I don't have a mouse.
What are you looking for?
I'm looking for my Zoom screen so I can share. It just disappeared.
Can you see it up on top?
No. All right. I have a post attendee zoom. Help me. Well, maybe I just start zoom. I don't know.
You don't see any blue around?
In the Zoom meeting. All right. Don't worry about it. Found it? Nope. Away then. Where's my Zoom? What happened to my meeting? Oh, this is what I've got right there. Over here.
Where the video cameras are. Yep. Oh, no.
Return to meeting?
Yeah.
Ah, there we go. Thank you. Okay, sorry about that.
Bad connection.
All right, now I gotta pull back up the presentation. Oh my God, when I do the presentation, that's what it's the.
It was better.
That somebody else has the presentation.
We've got this.
It means you're, but not necessarily better. What did she say? A return to the meeting? I lose the presentation when I return to the meeting. Does somebody online have it? Share the screen. Let's see if I can do that.
Yeah, that's your part.
Now I have to go back to meeting first. Oh, you know what? Maybe if I share. Man, I don't usually have this problem. Share. Screen two.
Want to send it to me?
It's a giant file. Maybe you can, John, can you just give it to Mary and maybe she can pull it up? I don't know why I can't. Whatever.
I won't be able to fill this up. Probably not much of it.
Oh, is that it?
That's, but that's not the right thing. I only have it open like 4,000 times. There we go. All right, I got it. Sorry. I can't see the.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, great. So.
Okay, I'm going to put it in presentation mode, maybe?
Sure, just go to the first slide.
Okay.
Just, Sarah, I guess I'll just say next. Perfect, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So again, we're here to talk about 7 Central, which all, as you all know, is actually a very important building in our little town, right central to our town, to our Town Common, or the front of Town Hall, and a building that we all pass by probably every day. And it's always been the home of, well, in our most recent history, a restaurant of various types over the years. But in order to give you guys a sense of what we're proposing, we thought it might be interesting, actually kind of fun, to give you a little tour through some of the other projects that Ed and his son Arthur had done in town. Mostly to show you the type of quality of the work that we are doing, and also the nature of it. Because it's a little bit unique. To be very honest, Ed and Arthur really enjoy bringing things that were really old back to life. And this is something that has to happen every once in a while, about every 50 to 100 years in the life of a building. Because buildings age, buildings fall apart. Buildings start to not last as long as they might. And so every once in a while, you have to come in and renovate them, right, and really save them, restore them, bring them back to what they were. So I also wanted to show these because I think my client really enjoys doing this. And so he asked, he actually shared a bunch of really fun images with me that I could share with you, kind of show you all why he does this and how they enjoy it. So what we're looking at here, I can't quite see the bottom of the slide, Sarah, but that's okay. This is, this is down at the bottom of Central Street. So this is 2, sorry, School Street. This is 2 School Street. You guys might recognize it. It has a very recognizable sort of half cylinder that is still there as part of the building. But back in the day, it was an old drugstore. This doorway is still there. There's lots of things that are still there. No longer this candy that says soda, drugs, and cigars. But it's definitely an important part of history of our town, like all of these other buildings that we're about to show you. Sarah, if you go to the next slide? And when my client found the building a few years ago, this is what it looked like. It was okay, you know, it definitely needed some work and renovation. And in fact, if you go to the next slide, Sarah, you'll see that it indeed has been preserved and really done a beautiful job to make it hopefully last another hundred years, right? That's sort of the goal. Without changing the character or really anything else about it, in fact, in many ways, trying to make it return to its historic nature when possible. Next slide. So this is another property. This is, I believe, Eleven Central, which is just next door actually to Seven Central. And this, I'm sure, was taken on the Fourth of July in some year, I don't know exactly when, but a long, long time ago. And it doesn't look entirely different from today. I love actually the chairs up here, they were, there's a little roof thing and they were gonna watch the parade from there, like we all gather and do today still, maybe not up on the roof, but definitely on the street. And the next slide, Sarah? And this is what it looked like a few years ago. You guys might remember some of those stores that were there. And at some point, they added this piece on the front. And next slide? And this is how it was restored and actually brought back to look a little bit more like it did historically. Really great job. I'm not sure people would even know that it's an old building, it was done so nice. Looks really quite, quite sharp and new. Next slide? This is the old Floyd's building. Is that, I'm not sure, yeah, great.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a really neat photograph on a day not like one we had recently with a lot of snow. Note the two horses that are walking down. This is Central as it joins up to Union. And the fact that building on the right there is, I think it's Thirty-Eight Union Street. And that building that we're actually seeing to the left is no longer there. That is gone. This one must have met its demise at some point.
You bet they didn't save that one.
Yeah, it's a beauty. And this is what it was like a few years ago, just as my client was purchasing the building. And to go to the next slide, we'll see that he has cleaned it up, preserved it, and really made it look quite beautiful. So again, it'll last another hundred years. Very tasteful, it's really a good example of the work that they do. Next slide? Okay, this is a little bit further up, I think this is Twenty-Nine Central Street. Good historic photo, I'm not sure the date of this, but this is also a neat example. If you go to the next slide, when this was purchased, it looked something like this, big tree in front of it, can't quite see the building. And then the next slide, you'll see that it's been preserved again and looks beautiful today. It actually has one of the greatest porches, I think, that's on town, it's in town on this part with the beautiful grass in front and the granite looks really sharp and very nice. Again, one more example of taking a really fine old building in town and preserving it and making it last. Okay, this is a really fun one. This is Nine Ashland. And we were in front of the historic board probably four years ago to talk about this one. This was a really important building in town, it's called a carpenter's Gothic. It's one of the few examples actually in our area of a building like this. You might be able to see here this image, this sort of looks like stone, it's not stone, it was all wood, but it was detailed and made to look like it was sort of an ashlar pattern out of the stone. And you just see this carriage house is still there. And all of those details were still part of the house, they just hadn't been cared for for a long time. Go to the next slide?
Just be careful you don't touch the screen.
Yeah, I just realized that, thank you. So this is what it looked like. It had in fact been and in same family for many, many years. And it came on the market and was purchased by my client. If you go to the next slide, you'll see it doesn't look very different, but it looks almost like it's brand new. In fact, it was fully restored, all of these really interesting neat windows with the Gothic arches and the little window up there at the top, that those were all created to look the way that they were originally designed and built. And next slide? So of course, this is One School Street, which is kind of neat because this one's in process. Again, very important building in town, right on a corner of School and Central Street, another pharmacy, apparently they were, you know, very popular business back in the day. And it looks very much like it does today without the awning and such. And you'll see that building tucked in behind there is now actually attached, right? There's a roof here, which is the entry and connects to both the front and the back. Next slide, Sarah? In fact, that is the back as it existed not too long ago. Next slide? And how it is today, again, in process. So my client is starting at the rear and making their way towards the front using all, you know, the materials and the windows and the colors that we would hope that they would and keeping that quality very high. And we heard, I heard tonight from my client that one of the tenants in the front, that they were waiting to move so that they could start work in the front, that has happened. So soon, these things can take time, but soon they will start working, which is very exciting. You'd be interested to know, there were thirteen units in this building. That's incredible. So one of the densest buildings for sure in our downtown area. And a very interesting example, given the three A process that we just went through. And some people have said actually during that process that this building was one of their favorite buildings in town. So thank goodness it is preserved, will look beautiful. Next slide, I think it's just one more view of that, this is around the corner where the work is continuing on the backside. And one more slide? Yeah, again, this is the facade on School Street. So that brings us then, if you go to the next slide, Sarah, to the reason why we are here today. So this is an early photograph of Seven Central. Doesn't look quite like it because it's quite, it's taller in its proportion, but you'll see where the door elevation is at the sill of the door. It looks like the street got higher, maybe about a foot higher, which is interesting, but that does happen also with time. But you can see the building, even when it was built back in the day, had a little bit of a bow in the roof, which it still does today. Next slide? And this is what it looked like recently, this is back when it was Seven Central. I believe it then became anti-table. And there was a bar, quite a popular bar in the front part of the building. You'll notice that that piece that was added at some point, we think nineteen sixties probably, has been removed, so this part had some structural issues and is now gone. But the goal is to try and take it back and make it look more like it looked in the past. And we have been in front of the Historic Commission for this as well. So the reason we're here today, obviously, is because we are proposing three residential units in the back part of this building for two and then actually one unit upstairs on the second floor here. And then the lower level where the restaurant was will become in a smaller footprint, a cafe. And we're not sure exactly what or who yet, that's all still in the works as again, these things sometimes take time. But I think it's a proven thing that this restaurant really didn't work in the size that it was. If you might recall, there was a back area with a back bar and an upstairs area, which I think I went to once for a work event. But a lot of seating and a lot of area. The front part, I think, the bar especially got a lot of use, but not so much the back. And that may have been part of the reason why the restaurants didn't survive. Although one was there for a very long, long time. But the last few didn't survive as well. So the hope is to put something there that's a little bit more pedestrian actually, where you may not have to drive to come here, but people would walk here much like we do to our downtown. And they have high hopes for a place that serves really great coffee. So if you're a coffee connoisseur, this might be your spot. As well as pastries, as well as sandwiches, something like that is the thought. So the reason we're here then is to ask for a special permit because of the uses table under section four point two and note five. If you want to do up to four units in the general district, we must come and ask for a special permit and talk about how it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think actually, the opposite of that, this is maybe the prototype of what we want in our downtown. As we all know from the three A process, there's a lot of discussion about this, about appropriately sized opportunities in town, right? Things with three, two, three, or four units perhaps, within walking distance to downtown. In my opinion, multi-use, so that perhaps it had a retail use on the first floor and then apartments up above is in fact exactly what happens next door in the building to the left, Eleven Central, as well as next door to the building to the right. So above Helen's, but all the shop, there are units up there on the second and third floor as well. So this is what I think we all hope would get developed in our town, something that's in keeping with the scale, in keeping with the character, can yes, add residential units, which we definitely need, but also add some life and vibrance to our downtown by maintaining the retail use. So I have just after this, a few plans, site plan plans and elevations that I can just quickly share. Go to the next slides. So here's Central Street, the bottom here. This is actually a plan of the lowest level, but simply to illustrate that there is parking at the back. For three units, we are required to have five parking spaces. There are three really great parking spaces that exist that are tucked in beneath an existing deck in the back. The idea is that those three units would be assigned one to each unit. And then we're showing two piggyback spaces at the back. In our mind, those would be perfect for folks who might work in the cafe or for an additional car if needed for the units. Of course, there's also parking out on the Central Street and there's also parking, of course, behind Town Hall in the public parking lot. I have a personal opinion about parking, which is mostly that you can never provide enough because people perceive that there's always a lack of parking. However, I can attest that I have never, ever not been able to park anytime I've ever driven downtown, whether it's to Crosby's, Alice's, wherever. And I'm embarrassed to say, I live just on School Street, I should not be driving to town, but when I do, there is not a real issue, which I like. I enjoy having the option and being able to walk. But this use also changing to residential in a smaller footprint for that cafe, I would argue that it would have a much smaller demand for people parking and coming here. The cafe is more of a pedestrian thing where people will come, walk, get a coffee. Maybe they come, stop while they're walking their dog, that sort of thing feels right in this area. Next slide, Sarah? So as I mentioned, the cafe will be down here on the first floor. It's actually small enough, it's less than two thousand per feet, so only one bathroom is required. Roughly speaking, where the bar is now will likely be a bar, but more of a breakfast bar and where the coffee and pastries will be served. And the rest would be open seating for people who are enjoying their breakfast or coffee. Outdoors here where that bowl of dishon was will now be an outdoor patio. We can all imagine walking down on the beautiful day in the spring or summer, sitting outside and enjoying our pastries and seeing people who pass by. This is something that's actually not as common as you would think in our town, but where there's an opportunity to have an outdoor patio for something like this, we think it would be really great. And upstairs on the second floor, we think actually historically, there was a unit up here. There's evidence that there were people perhaps living there in some sort of apartment, but we're really cleaning up, we also grab a bit of space up in the rafters of the ambro roof to have a small two-bedroom apartment up above if the front's hard. We did note when we were walking through the building and measuring and taking note of the structure, it is very old. Lots of the original beams and posts are still in place. We think, many of the projects that I showed you, my client has essentially rebuilt these buildings from the inside out. Sometimes that's required. It's not the easiest way to do it, it'd be far easier to knock this down and build new, but with the conservation commission, the adjacency to the water, that gets tricky. Plus, there's a lot of nostalgia and history with this building. So as is my client's typical practice, we will try and rebuild this from the inside out. There might be some things that may need to be replaced entirely, but it's our hope to work with this as much as possible. Just a quick story, one corner of the building, this corner here, there's probably a six-inch difference in height and it slopes dramatically up that corner. No idea why, it's actually framed that way? Don't know, must have been that way a long time. So we'll have to try and mitigate things like that, make it a little bit more usable for people who live there. Next slide, Sarah? Next is just the two units in the back, so very, very simply, all of this is now either kitchen and more dining back here. We're going to simply take that and divide it in half. It will be a two-story unit on the left and a two-story unit on the right. The entry will be actually off of the back, off the deck, which will be close to the parking at the rear. And then upstairs, there'll be a bedroom at the front in both units and then two bedrooms at the back. Now, this is one little place where we actually are adding a little square footage. Right here on the corner, on the second floor, there's an incomplete piece, they didn't quite fill in all of that roof area like they did on this side. So to make these equal, we're proposing we just fill that in a little bit. The good news is, you really can't see it from that, you really can't see it from the front. It's in the middle of both of those, in an area which is currently just roof right now. So we think it's an ideal place to grab a little extra square footage to make a two-bedroom unit feasible. Next slide, Sarah? Here we see the front, it looks unremarkable, but just like it did historically, quite a simple building. Notice there's no bow in my drawing, but we'll try and straighten it out, we'll see how well we can do with that. But it will be the entry to the cafe and seating to the left and then more of the kind of retail area to the right. You see the outdoor patio right there. Color, we're showing sort of a dark gray, we'll see how that goes. The historic folks might want to give an opinion to try to in there. You'll see, but at the back, we are adding something to make this feel a little bit more like entry. We are gonna add a very simple porch roof for the two-entry door so that when they're getting their keys out and going in the door, they're not getting rained on. But also so that it simply feels a little bit more like a residential entry. And then there is a piece coming off now, which has sort of nineteen eighties looking window that we're not terribly fond of. But to again, make these units the same, we'll be taking that off and fix the roof, make it look a little bit more appropriate. You see up here, those three parking spots, they're beneath, what is a concrete deck. Got one more slide left? Which is just the side elevations, this one is if you're walking down Central, the building will be on your right, looking down in between the buildings. This is that outdoor patio area, the unit up above there and the two units in the back. And then this piece right here. And then this piece right here is that area that I described as being added. So as you can see, it's between the front gambrel part and the back gable roof part, and there's this area there that's just roof right now. A little odd, but it is what it is. So we're going to infill a piece of that. But it's nice that it's not a change that will be really perceived from the front on the street, or really from the back, because it's tucked in the middle. It'll look exactly like the other side. So I think it's a solution that actually looks like it was always there. That's it.
Is there any landscaping?
Not really. As you know, the building's right on the street, could not get closer to that sidewalk. They do, can't really call it landscaping, but historically, they've really done a nice job with the planter boxes. I would expect that that would remain something that's important. And then the back, I would imagine that the deck, now that it would be two units, that might become something that that the tenants might also have flowers and things out on. But there there's really no landscape to speak of besides that.
Next question, sir. Do you have, do you have the image of the the Central Street side? Do you have that image?
Yes. Existing or proposed?
Proposed.
Proposed, yeah. Can you just go back one slide? So this is the facade that faces.
So that basically is the facade that we have today.
Exactly.
Demonstration window, door opening, everything else.
Exactly. And the historic folks actually had an opinion about the the windows. If you remember the image I showed way back, it was historic. They were all six over six windows up top, as well as on the bottom. And as things in history go, you can pick your moment in time that you want to restore things back to. They have a strong opinion of having it look this way. So we said, okay. That's right. And it it really is okay, because as a commercial use on the first floor, it can be different.
It's all commercial use in the first floor.
On on the front, correct.
On the front.
Yep.
I applaud a lot of your client's desire to keep it as it is.
On that note, by the way, a little off topic, but at one School Street, he's proposing to change the front of that back to retail as well. It has not been retail for a very long. So that's exciting.
He is going to rekill.
That's the idea.
Wow.
Ed, if you're if you're on, and if I misspoke, please correct me, but that's my understanding.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, that is correct. On one School Street, I I am posing, or I would like to put it back exactly the way, I think it was an image there, I'm not sure if there is, and I can send one to your drawing that was done in eighteen hundred, and eighteen, I think it was eighteen sixties or something like that, that it was a pharmacy there, that's the way I would like to put it back. I don't know what we'll go in there, but that's how I will make it look like exactly the way the image is. If you have that image on the, on one of the pictures we sent you, maybe you can show them. But that's how it will look.
Okay, Sue?
Could you talk about lighting a little bit?
Sure.
Stairier lighting around the parking lot, front, side?
Good, good question. So we will definitely have some lighting and signage, which we haven't designed yet, don't really know yet what it's going to be exactly. As you may recall, there's a large sign that's there, actually, it's not there now, it was there, my name was seven central. Then antique table had more of a round, almost like like the seal of town. But there, we will probably have some lighting on the front to light that, to light that side. Now, on the back, there's simply two entry doors, but we will have some lighting beneath that new porch roof. Maybe not even actually visible from from outside that, because it's a nice way to tuck it underneath there, again, simply for for building entry. The the deck, where the cars are, is quite low. I'm not sure we'll be able to do lighting beneath them, and I'm not sure it's really necessary either. Then there's no other real public, actually, go to the next slide, sir. The the entry to the unit above the cafe is along the side of a set of stairs and an entry door there, so there will be a light there. But besides that, this is not really a public path, I think we would not really encourage people to to go there. There is a set of stairs here and on the other side, that should be lit by by some means, which we'll look at. Not sure exactly, there might be step lights there, or perhaps a light fixture up above that would light stairs, just just for safety.
That is sort of my concern when you said there would be nothing but a parking.
Yeah, for safety. Yeah, we could, we could probably find a way, do some site lighting. We will try and keep the the lights pointed down, not pointing up, but we can, we can take a look at that. There's people walking in their cars up that steps, trying to find a way to light.
I have a quick question. Are you concerned about water level rise in the back and whether whatever's in the basement?
Yeah.
Can be flood protected, because I think there's one.
So there there's a reason we're not showing anything in the basement besides basement. It will likely have, sorry, the the stairs in the back units will go down to the basement, so they will have access to it. We're not going to have anything down there but storage, place for bikes, place for bags, place for things that people have, right? But it should not be occupiable, because it will flood. I'm certain of it, it hasn't passed. If this were a building being built today, we couldn't build it here, because of that, because of that reason.
Mary?
I have some, a few random questions. So not what's, not what is there currently, because there's nothing currently in there. What was on the second and third floor before?
Yeah. So there was, called a function room, up on the second floor, then looked out, it was up here, then looked out, kind of a big window toward the park. I think that was a space that was rented out for parties or lunches and things like that. Besides that, there were two bathrooms up there, and that's it. Upstairs here, on the second floor of the front part, I'm really sure how they used that most recently. It was sort of, there's some signs that maybe it was like an office for people who worked in a restaurant, maybe they had to order food up there or something like that, but it wasn't occupied for for a long time. Maybe someone, a person who worked in a restaurant could have lived up there, probably not legally, but it was sort of set up that way.
And what was the other space downstairs in the back going to be?
Yeah. Oh, going to be? So so that will be part of the two new units in the back. So the the units will be two floors. The floor that's at the, so if you're entering off of off of Central Street, and you walk back, there's actually a step up that gets you to this back area, there's currently a back bar and some extra seating. Right about at this point here, it will be cafe in front, and then and then the unit will start at the back here. So that first floor unit, the first floor of this unit will be the entry, and then a living space and kitchen, and then there'll be stairs to go up to the bedrooms upstairs.
Thank you. I mean, I think it'd be good to have the fire chief here or somewhere to understand all the fire requirements, but.
Yeah, it it'll be sprinkler, because it has to be.
Yeah, because near a kitchen.
Yeah, well, as a multi-use building that's adding a residential use, it has. Yeah.
But the flooding in the back and the parking. I see that as a potential issue, and how do you handle that?
Yeah, so it's an issue for every property along that area. In fact, the building next door, this building, the one next door to that, the Hoopers, the old Hoopers building, and even the firehouse, and the church, all of those properties flood once a year, probably. They don't flood to a disastrous level, it'll it'll flood six inches sort of thing. So for a car, it's annoying, but definitely not detrimental. And I believe all of those buildings that are in in that area, for example, the the church, the church I I know well, has a basement and all of its mechanical stuff down at that level. Anything that is in that situation should bring that mechanical stuff up, high enough that it won't flood. Again, in this case, just a couple of feet would 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 suffice. So in our case, whatever we have down there, we would recommend that it it's raised a couple of feet, in the case that it does flood. But there's not a whole lot else you can do.
So my obvious concern is that require, relying on off-street parking for an area that we know potential of flood and probably will flood more so. So that could kick the cars out to the street for parking more often than not, and.
Well, I'll put it this way. In case of a flood event like that, the public parking area back here is ocean.
Worse flooding.
Yes.
Yeah, so where the, the question is, where do the cars go?
Yeah, I I think in a community like like ours, we just have to do the best we we can. You know, one would ask the same question about people who work here in City Hall, when that floods, what do we do? Yes, some people will probably be pushed into the streets. Imagine people might park next to the firehouse, go go to the school, which is what we do today, in cases when that that happens.
So the cafe will, has parking requirements, so one's off-street spot per for person capacity. Where is that proposed to go?
Yeah, so if you go back to the site plan, a couple of slides up. So, yeah. One more. Great. So we're we're proposing that the two of the spots at the back could be used for employees at the cafe. Besides that, because it's it's an existing restaurant space that has no parking at the moment, that's that's our existing condition, and because that's not not a change of use, we're not providing any more parking than what they've had for the last hundred years.
So, but those two spots are for dwelling units that you just pointed to?
Yeah, so so five spots are required for three units. And it's it's up to to the the owner to to allocate that. Certainly, if there's a tenant who requires two, two parking spaces, then he can allocate one of those extra spaces to that. If if I were the owner, I would say you have one space with with the unit, and that's that's what, which is up to up to the owner to manage. And if the person has five cars, then they don't rent that apartment.
And just the, I have them back to the right of way back there, so is that dead end?
Yeah, this is sort of curious. There's definitely a, an area that allows access from next to Hoopers to come down and and next to the firehouse, and come across the the back. That's all kept clear, it seems. And when you get back to here, there's no evidence of this connection out to to the street. I'm not sure when in time, or it might be just something that exists on paper and doesn't exist. It might be in case something ever happens to that parking lot over here at 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 Hoopers. But I'm not totally sure exactly how that works, that's beyond our our property.
So who plows back there? The right of way for who? For what?
That's a good question. Actually, I wonder if, Ed, do you have a plowing service or anything for for your properties currently in the back?
Yeah, I do. I currently, I've been plowing here since today, I own it. I take care of actually all behind the property there. And sometimes I go to the fire station, also, we plow down the end there, just to help them out.
Okay, so he owns all those properties, so he just plows it anyway?
Yeah, he owns one, two, three, and then the tubers, which which they do not own. That's part of the knowledge by another family. Yeah.
Little questions. You actually could put another three cars there, so while there's not, you know, we all live, have lived in places where you had to move cars in and out. So in point of fact, there are probably another, there probably are eight or nine parking spaces on the property.
In in practice, yeah.
Yeah, in practice, you could put eight or nine cars, I think. And you stand out there and not even be in the right of way.
Correct.
Just, I think.
I I tried to not draw stuff on property that we don't, that my client doesn't own.
No, right, right.
That's not so good to do.
I'm not talking about the right of way, I'm just talking about that actually, you could put cars one behind the other, and you would meet the, the, you know, if if you strike and said, unit A gets.
In fact, yes.
Okay, so then my other, my question is, is there any increase in footprint in what you're doing? Okay. And the exist.
Sorry, only on the second floor.
Right, but I meant footprint on the ground, first floor. And then the existing parking spaces are there today.
Correct.
And all of that pervia, impervious.
Correct.
Area is already there today.
Correct.
So in fact, yeah, and I think that that's important. Okay. The other thing, I guess, is, is this anticipated to remain single owner?
Oh, that's an interesting question. Ed, if you don't mind answering that question, do you plan on owning this building and renting the units, or will it at some point become condominiumized?
No, no, but we're going to, like we do with all the other properties, we would want to own it and just rent. If that's, is the question, is that, was that the question, sir?
I think so, yes.
I'm not sure if that's the outcome of a special permit, but it could be a.
Good question.
Peter, any questions?
Yes, sir.
For Peter Morton?
No, I don't. I just, well, I just have one, excuse me, observation, and I was trying to read it off of the plan, it's kind of tight, but the the clearance for the parking spaces in the back, was it six feet, John, is that what it is?
It should be eight feet.
Eight feet, okay, all right.
Actually, it should be nine feet, I'll I'll check that. There are two, there are two existing concrete posts, which will absolutely dictate that parking, but parking wants to be between eight and nine feet. So I'll I'll check that and make sure, there is a dimension, but it's also small, I can't.
Oh, yes.
Eight foot four, yeah, which isn't, isn't terrible. So that's.
And John, between eight. That's, that's eight point, eight point four height?
No, width.
Oh, no, width is is eight foot four. Height, I don't know if I have that off the top of of my head. It's not terribly tall, but it it is certainly tall enough to be able to open the door and get out and stand, and, you know, I, you wouldn't be able to park a van underneath it, nor something with a roof rack.
Yeah, or a or a GSB, but that's, that's not part of this discussion.
So in actuality, our requirement is nine foot spaces, so you would need a.
Yeah, Sarah, what's sort of interesting is that they are existing.
Yeah, we know. Yeah. Sorry, Mary, we just.
Was it nine by eighteen?
Nine by eighteen.
Yes.
Okay, other questions? Comments?
If you didn't get the sense of it, I'm really excited that we're doing housing downtown, even three units. And I think this hopefully will be something that is continued on other properties. And maybe the general district might one day have this by right more than we do, but my client very happy to be able to start somewhere.
Well, I'm going to flip that and ask if there's a it seems, I'm excited that you're keeping a commercial space on the first floor. And I would like to see that be a condition of the special permit. Is that, that, that street side, central street unit, first floor central street unit, be, remain with some sort of commercial use as a condition of the special permit?
I'm sure that would be a problem, but Ed, I won't speak for you.
You could just repeat that, I'm sorry.
Well, I think what I'm going to propose to the board is that, that one of the conditions of the special permit is that the central street first floor street-side unit, which is currently proposed as some sort of a cafe, but might be retail or office or something, remain a commercial use as a condition of the special permit.
Yeah, I, my intention to just reiterate is to keep a commercial space at this Seven Central and also to add another one or two commercial spaces at one school street to keep the synergy for one school street, two school street, eleven central, all of the downtown, the same as it was back in, you know, eighteen hundreds.
Other?
Yes, I'm keeping the commercial space.
Okay, other questions or comments from the board?
So are we looking at this as the cafe use, or we don't look at what the use is on the first floor, or do we just look at it as the commercial use? Because if we're looking at it, you know, it's cafe, I mean, I would ask questions like, what are the hours, blah, 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 but that's not our purview then.
Good question. I think we're posed as a cafe, so if we, if, I think we could Mark, help me out.
Well.
Looking at the special permit conditions, and I don't see the specific use as, so this is.
That's not what the special permit necessarily is for, the specific use. So it's for the pre-residentials and for the change of use.
You're suggesting we dictate the use?
No, I'm not, I'm.
No, I'm just saying, and I don't think it's us, but, you know, and not that they're going to, but who in town then says, oh, you know, they presented it's going to be a cafe, and then two months from now it's a tattoo. Like, who oversees that in town? Maybe it's the
The building.
The select board, I don't know.
So if it's a use that's allowed in town by right,
By right.
The owner can do whatever they like in it.
Yeah.
If it's a tattoo, probably, I don't think that use is allowed. Nor, nor something that might, like, I don't know if there are rules like this in town, but probably can't be open until two in the morning, right? So there probably are things that are logical limitations. But, you know, could it be a bookstore? Yes, could it be a?
There's a list, there's a list of commercial uses, and that is business or professional office, office of a doctor, medical office if it has CBA, general retail, personal, general service, restaurant, indoor recreation club is not allowed, printing and publishing is allowed, yacht storage is allowed, fishing, shellfish, wind energy conversion is not allowed, and wind monitoring is not allowed. So, oh, and a couple others. Helicopter landing is not allowed unless you have a special permit. Adult entertainment is not allowed.
Doesn't CBA look at change of use?
So that is, actually, that's a great question. So at the end of this month, we are coming back actually for that, because it's a non-conforming building that's having a change of use.
Sarah, one?
Yeah.
Maybe I'm misreading this, but in twelve point five point four.
Hold on, let's do, bring something up.
It does say, conditions may be limitation as to size, number of occupants, or method and time of operation of any.
Okay.
So I think we can ask about that.
Okay.
I wonder if that might fall under the CBA, that special.
Okay, but we could require, we could dictate it whether we choose to or not. I think also if you have a liquor license or some sort of board of health, restaurant must have a license from the town, right? Those probably can stick with ours as well.
I would think.
Yeah. And, um, okay, any other questions from the board right now or comments? I see that, I think Sarah Pierce, you had your hand up?
Yes, hi, thank you, Sarah Pierce, ninth front street. First of all, I'd love to just comment that the renovations that the owner who is on right now have done are outstanding, really great work and keeping in with the character of the town. It's very nice to see that type of work happening in the downtown of Manchester. I wondered, the architect speaking has referenced the 3A multiple times, and wondered if, since there are multiple buildings that the owner has in town, if you would ever consider one of the units in this new location as an affordable unit? Since we are trying to achieve that, it isn't with walking to the MBTA, et cetera, following those types of guidelines.
Yeah, I think within our ordinance, it is not required if you're under a certain number of units. And I know that the logic behind that is that to develop a small number of units is much more expensive than to develop a larger number of units. So it is an extra burden to do that. However, I shouldn't speak for Ed. I assume that he's doing these as market rate, but we haven't had that discussion.
Okay, I completely understand that. I'm just wondering at what point will things not become market rate when they're in the village? And if it's just something that would be considered at some point? Or how would we go about approaching that or asking the owner?
Yep, I'm gonna just jump in, Sarah, and I think I'm gonna rephrase your comment to, if you don't mind to say that, to the extent possible, you would like to see if one of these could be affordable, and then I'm gonna respond to say that the applicant is not required, and I think, nor are we able to create any market requirements in terms of.
Well, I know, I know it's not in one of the overlay districts or like a 3A district, but I just was wondering, since the planning board has quite a bit of oversight on how zoning changes, or if we could, I don't know how that works. That's why I'm just asking. I'm trying to help solve the affordability issue we have in Manchester, and just thought that would be a prime location for a unit. So just a question, and thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Chris, go ahead.
So, I don't think it would be reasonable to require an affordable unit as a condition of the special permit. But I will say that the Affordable Housing Trust would probably be willing to discuss providing a financial subsidy or an incentive to make some of these units affordable. And that, I can put that on the table for Ed to think about, and we'd really love to work with Ed on creating some affordability in the downtown.
Maybe a great opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Chris, would that go on the SHI?
Sure, absolutely could, yeah.
I'm sorry, I've lost mine. I'm gonna stop sharing again. I don't know why I'm having such a hard time.
Sandy Rogers.
Okay, Sandy Rogers, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I first want to preface this is.
Can you just say your address, please?
Oh, Sandy Rogers, eighty-two Old Essex Road. I want to preface this is that I came in late to the discussion, so apologies ahead of time if this was covered. My question sort of stems from the last bit of the discussion on what is the current use of, whether it be a restaurant or another, commercial use combined with residential? Is there something in the process of being approved by the planning board regarding anything to do with ventilation, fire code, anything like that that is necessary when you combine residential with a facility that is a restaurant versus like a storefront where there's more kinds of fumes and need for all of the sort of safety requirements that, especially when you're dealing with an older building. Thank you.
I think building codes and fire codes dictate that. And John is nodding, and I will affirm that. I think that answers the question. I think that's handled by the code officials, but you're right. There are considerations and fire considerations. I also wanted just to come back to Mary's question about fire and building inspector, and Mark and I met about driveways with fire and the building inspector, and we asked about this project, and they said they didn't have any comments, that it was, that they would require fire suppression because it's of that size, and that there were a number of codes that needed to meet, but they didn't see a problem, they didn't have any negative impact input or special conditions to advise us.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, following up on that question, if we could get something from the fire chief, that he's looked at it from having access on that right-of-way for now residential dwellings in the back, which is not currently there.
Yeah, so when we submit this for a building permit, it will be circulated to fire, to the health inspector, to everyone who in town needs to look at it. They will then comment, and we sometimes meet with the fire as well, just to go over things like that. So there is part of the, that's part of the building permit process.
Yeah, and we usually ask for input to the.
And this was circulated to building, fire, EPW, and police.
And you have not received any comments?
No, they didn't receive a comment.
Go ahead, Mark.
From the police department that they have no concern.
Okay.
So can we get these things in writing though? Because we don't, we don't, we're not privy to any of these conversations outside of a meeting.
Well, I'm reporting out that from that, just got from that, we actually had a face-to-face where we asked them if they had any concerns, and they said no. So, and then Mark has communicated with them, so. Okay, other questions from the board, and what do we think about conditions that we might impose? I'd like to see us, I have a couple that I was going to suggest. We mentioned.
Commercial on the front.
Commercial on the front. Sue mentioned lighting. I think that, that what I was going to suggest is that all lighting should comply with the zoning requirements for lighting and with the historic commission's review of lighting. So that was another one. And then the other one was, because I think it's section six point three point eight, which is pedestrian vehicle access and traffic management, number six, that we can approve a reduction in parking, given that a cafe needs parking for residents. And I would say that this planning board may reduce the number of required spaces to those existing. Consider, and the rationale is that this was a much larger restaurant in the past than the proposed new use, and thus existing five to eight spaces on the property will be deemed to be sufficient. That would be another suggestion.
Can we just clarify, when you say eight spaces, those aren't in the setback, because it seemed like there wasn't a lot, if you're doing tandem. I couldn't see on the map if how much space do you have, do you meet the setback parking, and how many feet left over?
Parking could be in the setback, sure.
Doesn't the property run to the roof?
Yeah.
Actually, the property line is shown in front of the roof. But in any case, there is approximately more than twenty feet behind each parking space that we've shown. So if one wanted to, and there's nothing in Arizona that says you can't do a tandem behind each one, we could have as much as two, four, six, eight.
So that's twenty feet, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then my personal response in terms of fire access, the building exists, yay. And thus, this isn't an increase in footprint, and so I don't know what would, you know, I don't think it's within our purview to ask the building nor should people be very happy with us if we ask a portion of the building to come down. So I think the fire access is kind of, and there is the right-of-way.
Well, my concern with the fire access was because we're changing uses to now dwell. So we've had recent fires, so I want to make sure that the fire department has said they can cleanly get back there with their fire apparatus if needed. That was my question.
And Mary, there are a number of things just to address what will have to happen with the building. First of all, if you add a residential use to an existing building, the building must be screened. That's the first thing, which is great. Second, when there's a mixed use of a commercial use on the first floor and residential above, there must be a rated assembly between those two, so that ceiling of the first floor and the floor of the second floor must be rated. And there will certainly be a new fire alarm system installed as well, which will be up to the, to today's code, which is great and also very important. I think what else? Any new kitchen equipment that goes in will also have to be up to the new code as well. So I'm sure there's stuff that had been in there that probably wasn't. So that will also be to the building's benefit. Those are the things I can think of off the top of my head.
Yeah, and that's great. I'm just saying, you know, as our part of site plan, we get consulting from the fire department to say they can access as they need to, and I'm just looking at because it will be residential.
Frankly, I just want to say this is probably the best outcome we could have hoped for for this building, so I don't, you know, I think the conditions that we've nominated are reasonable, and I think we should craft them in.
I have, I see one more comment from Sandy Rogers. Do you still have a new comment?
Yes, thank you. I meant to bring this up. I've been looking at the schematics with, it sounds like you're talking about parking in the rear, and I would recommend an evaluation of the water table as well as just emergency access. Because it's pretty tight there, and I don't know what's going to change with the culvert work. Because that can, that has been flooding more at times, so just to put that on your radar. Thank you.
Thank you. What's the board's? What's the board's, we'd like to close the public hearing tonight and move this, or do we want to wait till additional information? I guess the specific request is from the fire department.
I think we should move ahead.
What's your schedule?
We'd like to move ahead. We're, we're already about a month behind where we wanted to.
Yeah.
I think the, the building looks like it's half worked on. We want to get it, look like it's fully worked on.
Yeah. Mark, do you think there's, we have enough information to go on tonight?
Yeah, I think we have plenty of information to go on. I think as what usually happens if a department has a concern, usually you hear from them about what their concerns are, I think in this case.
I talked to him.
Yes, I mean, we've talked to him about this as well. So I think that there's no concern here. So, I mean, obviously they need all the fire code requirements and both building code requirements.
Okay. So I'll take, I'm hearing that, a motion to close the...
I'm hoping to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Gordon Brewster?
Yes.
Chris Allee? Sue Philbrick?
Yes.
Mary Foley?
Peter Morton?
Yes.
And Sarah Creighton votes yes, so we have a unanimous vote to close the public hearing. Now take a motion to approve the special permit with the conditions that Mark is gonna summarize for us.
Lighting shall comply with the historic commission, with the historic commission requirements or review, bring it back to them.
Yeah.
And, and the zoning requirements for our lighting section. And commercial in the front portion of the building, which is, shall, the front portion of the building shall remain as commercial space and specifically the area that's currently proposed as a cafe, restaurant. And let the board finds that the parking requirement is less than the previous use and notes that the site can accommodate five big spaces in the rear of the property.
Any other conditions?
Can I just, excuse me, can I just, because I think John brought this up about the signage? Do we need to put a similar condition on the signage as we did the lighting?
That is just... Yes, I think that's a good suggestion, Peter. Thank you. There are sign bylaws, but I think the historic commission would like to weigh in on the signage. Good suggestion, thank you. Any other conditions or concerns? All right, I'll take, do we have a motion to...
Sure, I'll, I'll move that we approve the special permit as requested with the conditions outlined by Mark.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Gordon?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary? Peter?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. Great, thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
You'll get a decision.
Yes. Thank you all.
Good, thank you for your patience on this and...
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you to Ed as well. Great, okay. Still have lots to do tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, got our meeting back. So we have a number of zoning that we've been talking about for the Springtown meeting or for future town meetings. So we're gonna work through these in the order...
In case you want.
Yeah, enough for everybody. That would be easier than...
These are copies of everything.
Yeah.
These copies of everything?
Yes. It may be easier.
Okay, that's great. So the first, the first one is the establishment of associate members. So the background for people is that state law allows planning boards to have associate members who vote on special permits or special permits and site plan review. There's a little bit of lack of clarity in the state statute about that, but. And take for example, and a special permit requires five affirmative votes. And in order to see special permits in a timely way, we need to make sure we have really five, six or seven members who can review the permit and act on it in a timely way. And sometimes people are sick. Thank you for coming tonight, Peter. And, you know, Laura's out sick tonight. And, and that is difficult for applicants and sometimes when these go several nights in, because they're complicated, people have other obligations and it can jeopardize both the town's interests and an applicant's interests. And so the proposal here is the planning board should have one associate member appointed by the select board. Associate member's term shall run for one year and the chairman of the board may designate the associate member to sit for the purpose of acting on any application before the board in the case of absences, inability to act or conflict of interest on the part of any regular member of the board and/or in the event of a vacancy. So that's the proposal. Sue?
So I think it's essential that we have at least one associate member. I would like to see two as the planning board's liaison on the ZBA. I mean, they only have five members and they have two associate members and they use them, you know, all the time. So, and I would also like to see the term be two years rather than one. I just think in order to meet our goal of making things run smoothly for applicants and the town, it would be great to have two and their terms could be two years.
I would say, I would agree with both those things and it's, they could be staggered.
Staggered is a good idea.
Staggered, two-year, two's.
So what, what would be the commitment of the individuals? Would they have to show up at every meeting?
They'd be, their commitment would be when called, you know. Tonight, we don't have a quorum or tonight, we don't have enough people to act on a special, we're hearing a special permit. But they, but they would be invited to come to them.
Well, I would think that, I think they would need to be here so that they're aware of what's going on and up to speed with everything.
But if we're talking about zoning changes, they don't necessarily need to move, their obligation would be when actually designated for a particular matter. We wouldn't hope that they would...
So they would be called upon when needed versus just needing to be here.
Right, we'd say, we have a special permit tonight. I think we, they would sit for special permit site plan review because particularly those things that are gonna go a number of nights, like cell signaling. You know, and the other, the other thing I'm gonna say is that there's a lot of pressure, we're volunteers. And, you know, we've had to take, you know, cell signaling, people took, participated from airports and boats and other things to try to make sure that we had a requisite number of people at the requisite number of things. So.
And when we voted, I think we were one short, right? One member short when we actually took the vote.
No, we were five. We had five.
Five, two members short, maybe. So that's a good example.
Yeah.
I only have one point. Currently, when there's a vacancy on the planning board, a new member is selected jointly by the select board and the planning board. And I think that should be the case here as well.
Okay. I was gonna suggest we take out the vacancy because there's another process for vacancies.
Oh, I'm not suggesting it be in here.
Yeah, it's in here, it's in this draft. So I think we don't want it in there here because there's a process for filling a vacancy.
Where is it?
It's at the end or in, or in the event of a vacancy.
I missed that.
So I don't think we want that. Because there is already a regular member of the board, so strike that.
Okay.
Okay. And so I think the question is...
What if, what if there's a vacancy but we have yet to go through whatever?
Then we'd be, then...
You still could use the associate member.
Yeah, for to rule on a, yeah.
So I...
Yeah, that's an absence of a member. Okay, go ahead.
So I don't think we're like the ZBA. The ZBA only listens to special permits, so you don't have as many special permits. So I don't think we need as many associate members. And then my other question would be about the select board appointing the associate member that's gonna decide on a special permit that an elected planning board member would do. It seems kind of a conflict of powers here that it would be the planning board that appoints an associate member, in my opinion. The ZBA is not an elected board, so they have associate members. And I know per mass law, you, the planning board can have associate members. But, you know, we're really elected to do this and it's gonna be in a rare case that we can't. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, so we have the number, the appointing and the duration and the term, those really the, the issues. I have a strong feeling about.
The question is what?
I felt that the reason why I proposed it this way, I'll explain it then.
Okay, go ahead.
Maybe that'll help a little bit. So I felt that the number of special permits that we have is relatively small and most of them are for something relatively simple, although it may take a couple, two, three meetings. Generally, your special permits, aside from CST, don't have a lot of land area where you're gonna have a lot of other big developments that are gonna take the six, eight months to get through a process. So that's why I felt one associate member would be sufficient for the board. The annual appointments is through the select board. I don't really have a strong feeling either way. I just figured for ease of appointments and getting it through a process, you don't have to have a joint meeting. It's for an associate member, it's on an annual basis. The person doesn't work out, it just isn't interested, doesn't attend enough meetings, be reappointed the next, or somebody else can be appointed the next year. And then the third issue was the...
Body that does the appointment.
Body.
Term limit?
Oh, the term, yeah. And that's why I figured one year and I figured the select board for ease of point. That's, so that's why I did that. And I felt that the, having one extra person here, the alternate really should be, although they may only vote from time to time, they really should be at every meeting. Because it's basically a planning board's member in training and they should be learning everything the board talks about and does and finds out whether they're interested in really running a point or seat, so.
So the select board, I mean, it certainly would make it easier if the select board did, like one more thing for them to do. That's the other thing. But then they're elected to, I mean, they're also elected, so I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I just, I don't have a strong feeling one way. I just want to have at least one associate member. And the question is, what is... Well, why don't we put it out exactly the way it's written here and we'll have some input in a public hearing, which is the intent of the public hearing. And maybe we could say, when we put it forward, we could say one or two, and we could put one or two terms and we could put by this landing board, select board, and in the draft that's at, at the town clerk. And we'll get some input in the public hearing.
Does that make sense?
Can we do that? Just say in parentheses, put one, parentheses, or two.
So Sarah, are you asking, can we do this? Should we do this? Or are we going to do it? Now we're only talking about term and number.
So what we're proposing is to put forward an article at Springtown meeting and the process for doing that is we have to have, hold a public hearing.
Okay.
So instead of us going around in circles, why don't we ask for input about that at the public hearing? It's pretty simple to understand. So I'd like to suggest that we do that and move on to the next one?
Sure.
Okay. Great. The next one is to make a clearer statement about the applicability of site plan review. So currently, our site plan review is really only triggered by off-street parking, except there are a few places in the bylaw that also say site plan review but are not referenced in the applicability section. And Mark has suggested that we should expand our site plan review criteria. So Mark, you want to just review why each of these proposed?
So right now, really site plan review is for any newer development, expansion or change other than a single or two-family residence, which would, under the schedule of parking, require five or more spaces regardless of the pre-existing number of spaces. So for anything that's kind of an existing commercial property, it really don't have to come to site plan review unless they're really expanding some of the area, which is why, for example, the storage place didn't really come to planning board. So typically, any sort of major redevelopment of a site, even if it's just for the same use but different, would come to the planning board. So I basically went through and noted the various types of site plan review criteria that you typically see, that's worked well in other communities. So obviously for a new structure, new construction of a structure for commercial uses, additions to instruction, structures over 400 square feet, so if someone's doing any sort of addition to a commercial property, that would come under a site plan review. Change of occupancy, which increases the load by 10%, so again, for commercial uses, change of an existing residential structure to commercial, direction of a drive-through facility, multifamily, destruction, you know, three or more units, and then any alteration of land greater than an acre. So currently, any sort of site clearing, you know, if you're expanding your yard, that shouldn't have to be site, some sort of an acre or more doesn't always go to the construction area. There could be substantial drainage changes and other things. And we added a couple exemptions for smaller additions, the board gave way, although it's over 400, but it's not more than 1,000 square feet, wave these requirements. And if you're gonna do a special permit, a plan review would happen currently that applicant doesn't have to come back to re-review the same thing you were...
Okay.
I think it's good. Has town council taken a look at this?
No, after, can I?
So I went through the bylaw and did a search for site plan review and found that there are several instances where we actually require site plan review, which are not listed in 12.6. And I think that that is, we can list, those are, in the addition of any new accessory use to the principal use, where addition exceeds the threshold in 12.6, allowed use in the LCD, offices within a single building of not more than three medical doctors, marijuana businesses, and... The LGSI. I think that's the, the energy facilities. So I think what we should do is just reference any other places, any places cited in this bylaw. I think that's the, the energy facilities. So I think what we should do is just reference any other places, any places cited in this bylaw.
So I was thinking of number eight, where otherwise required by zoning.
By law, because what happens sometimes is we get also citizens petitions in the future that require site plan review. And certainly, the multifamily, the 3A districts require site plan review.
There's also the Dover Amendment stuff.
Yeah. So let's put any other places listed in this bylaw as another. We would definitely want, on all of these, get town council's review prior to the they may have some suggestions.
So is the construction of any drive-through facility in there, just because it's in our use table?
Yes, number five.
And on number four, does it make any sense to add, so it says a change in use of an existing residential structure to commercial use in District G or the LCD, since those are the only two districts that allow commercial, correct?
There are commercial uses, existing ones that are out there.
Right. Like on Summer Street?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, because what if you change something to allow some certain commercial use in residential districts? And we may want to have a review of that.
Yeah, station, you know.
Yeah.
My neighborhood, almost like that. Oh. So I'll just raise it here and feel the wrath, and then we can discuss it in the ADU section as well. I've looked at a lot of towns' proposed ADU bylaws, and surprisingly, for the by right, a lot of them are asking for site plan review to make sure that the ADU isn't, you know, in front of the primary building, or, you know, all sorts of things. So it's a topic to discuss if we would. Although it's by right, they're asking for site plan review. I see merit in that, but.
So what I would suggest is that, let me get a couple more down when we get to discussing that. Discuss whether we want to add that to that. Adding number eight would, if it was required in the ADU section,
It would come down.
It would, then, we would be covered here, so.
Okay. Are we in agreement that we should move this to a public hearing and town council and get input on this? Can we make sure we craft the notice of public intent, public notice on this one that is broad? So that if there are other uses that come up in the hearing, that we won't be limited just to whatever we've thought of so far?
Yeah, but I, I kind of have to have a because I have to file this. So I have to file this very specific document. So for the public hearing notice. So again, we can change it as long as it's not overly
Make number eight big.
Major intent of what we're trying to do.
How many more meetings will we have before the public hearing?
What's the?
I think our goal is to have the public hearing in four weeks. That way, it gives us time to notice another one if we need another one, if we have major changes. I think that actually gives us time right before town meeting. If we need to have, so if we have a change that's out of the scope of our public hearing notice, we would have time to post again.
So we could discuss it on the 24th? And then folks?
No, we need to post before, we need to post between now and then the 24th in order to hold it in the first meeting in March, which then gives us time. We hold a public hearing in the first meeting in March, and we have, I'm trying to avoid the last minute thing. If we have changes on that first meeting in March, we then can post and have another public hearing if needed before town meeting. I've looked at it.
Our first meeting in March is
March 10th, I think?
10th?
Yeah. Okay, let's go on to the zoning introduction. Mark, I'm going to let you.
So basically, the, as we discovered earlier, that this is obviously now a change in the statute that doesn't require two-thirds vote for certain zoning articles, and this has required two-thirds. But in reading through this, what this is, is really an information sheet about zoning. And although it's pretty detailed and includes a lot of good information, it really doesn't need to be in the zoning bylaw itself. And I think what it should be is it should be like an information sheet that's posted to the town website so that if people have questions about zoning bylaw or learn about it.
Getting it amended without going to town meeting.
Yes, exactly. So we could edit this and then put it on the planning board website for information on zoning.
So that's the recommendation, Mark's recommendation, is we delete it.
We delete it?
And that we ask town council, or obviously for
Yeah.
Wow. Could we have some introduction of like, here's our zoning bylaws, I mean, something?
Well, I think this would be a background piece that when we can modify, when Title V changes to Title VI and whatever the other codes are, I think it's a great idea. But
So that we don't have to go back to town meeting every time, simply the
Let's get, I would say we get town council's advice on it. The one is, the one, there is the date of when zoning was adopted, might need to be in our introduction, because that's sometimes a date that's important. But that still could be in background.
I think asking town council is a good idea. At that point, just more baggage.
It's a radical idea.
It's easy to understand.
Removing a whole page, two whole pages.
Okay, let's now we get to some less easy things. So the next topic we're going to talk about is accessory dwelling units.
Oh, sorry. Does the board want to move this forward to a public hearing as well?
I think what we want to do on this one is yes, but let's get town council's input.
Yeah, well, I'll get town council's input on everything, so that at the public hearing, you can read the comments as well.
Not knowing all of the import of all that elimination, what that means, what does it mean, Mark? You're eliminating a bunch of stuff here.
Yeah.
I don't want to go through it item by item, but you
Yes, but this is really an explanation of various parts of the zoning, well, there's various other state laws.
It's educational, not regulatory.
Exactly. And your zoning is a regulatory document, so you have the purpose, explains why you have it, and then you have the regulations. But this is kind of an information piece which explains some of the other stuff that might apply to land use and other things about
Elimination of all this, this
Yes.
front and back.
It's not regulatory in any way.
Not going to affect anything.
No.
Right. So there is a purpose section in the bylaw, which does say what zoning, what we're trying to achieve with zoning.
So I, I mean, from the standpoint of trying to help people that don't look at this stuff all the time, like we do, I think it's, I mean, I'm fine either way, but I think, you know, it does help people to understand, you know, that variances lapse within a year, special permits lapse within two, you know, people don't know where to go to find that stuff. I mean, we do, but they don't. So if we could do an introduction that you know, listed the law and maybe the few quick sections, and they could look. But I do think a lot of residents are blind because they don't know how to look.
But can we make an introduction that is not regulatory?
That doesn't have to be voted on at town meeting every time we want to change.
Right, so you could reference the 40A and say, 40A Section 10 is variance, is, you know, 40A Section 9 is whatever.
The thing that we could do is on our webpage, put more information about the process, because that is not really up on our various pages. You know, we have, you know, various bylaws and other information about certain applications where to get the application, but we don't really explanation of some of the processes that are listed really are just on the front. And then some of this on the back is other laws that might apply. So I think we could do a better job of, you know, that's what I was saying, pull this into the webpage, but maybe break it out into a couple of sections, one of the planning board, zoning board, planning, the processes.
Well, the next topic, which is accessory dwelling units, is a good example because the regulations for the, what we're calling small accessory dwelling units, I think, standard, are regulated by the state statute and regulations. And that's an example of, that would be really useful to have in a web, in a guide to navigating the zoning and the what's allowed. But we would have to amend the introduction at town meeting to add the regulations. So it's an example of how, if we don't have it in a regulatory document, we can add it and thus help residents. I do think, I agree with you, Mary, that residents don't know where to go, and that we need to do a better job of that. So but regulation, anyway, okay, so the next topic is the accessory dwelling units. So by way of background, the state had, the Housing Act provided, as of right, accessory dwelling units called protected use
Terrible term.
Accessory dwelling units. And we're going to call them, we propose to call them standard dwelling units. And those are small, 900 square square feet, or half the size of the principal dwelling unit, whichever is smaller. And that rule, that law, went into effect February 2nd, regardless of whether we have it in our zoning or not. And without any, and we are able to regulate those small, standard units marginally, I guess, is, there are so Mark took, oh, and the other thing is that an article to provide some marginal regulations on them would only require a 50% vote at town meeting, which is why we proposed it as two articles. We'll come to the second one in a minute. So that's the background. And I think we would reference the state regulations. And the proposal here is that they would be we would remove, the other part of this is to remove the existing accessory dwelling unit language that we currently have to kind of align standard, which are those that are under 900 square feet, with the second proposal, which is larger, that they all look the same in terms of their format of the regulations. They don't all have the same regulations. So the accessory dwelling units would be allowed in any district where single-family houses are allowed.
And that's what the law is. We don't have any choice of
And we would we propose to say this is the new Section 9.2. Only one accessory dwelling unit from standard unit we're talking about here.
Oh, yeah.
We need to put standard in here, Mark.
Right.
Well, no, because this applies to all accessory dwelling units. So if we pass the second one, which is the larger ones, you want this to apply as well.
Okay, good. So that accessory dwelling units is one on, one in a lot for structure. Shit, they shall not be permitted on two-family or multifamily properties. That is a gray area in the, or the protected use, ADUs in the regulations.
We would like to have it if we can.
So we'll, we'll try.
Well, didn't the new ones kind of clarify that a little? Seems to me, they took out that other definition.
But they don't say that it's allowed only in single-family.
So they don't say it's, they don't say it's, can't do this, they don't say you can't. So they've done kind of maybe what they had before. People are wondering if it's gray. My opinion is, we'll see what council says. Instead, if it's not, if the law doesn't not let us do this, then we can do this. And so that's my opinion, that the state laws generally strict.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say the four other towns that I've looked at, their proposed, all have it just in single-family.
Yeah.
Oh, they have something like this. That's not permitted on two-family or multifamily property.
Yes, but this doesn't match Page 1 table that you want to add.
Because that's for standard.
Yeah, we agree.
Just, these regulations were for everything, right?
Yeah. So, so yes, there, these would apply to the standard size, and if we have any votes to have larger ones by special permit, these would also apply to those.
So then I'm just saying on page, the first page, the table isn't the one that says add to Section 4.2?
Why is that incorrect?
Because you would put N's in D1, D2, and G.
No, but you could have it in a
If you had a single family.
It could be a single family. If it's a single-family home in D1 or D2, then it's allowed by right.
Oh, what I'm saying, what towns are doing in, in single-family district.
All of our districts except the LCD are single-family districts.
The single-family district by the regulations is defined as a place where a single-family home is allowed.
Right, that's how the first draft read, and then the second draft is, my reading changed it, but
I don't think so.
They took out that, I didn't bring the other paper, they took out that not clear definition.
Well, we'll get council.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, that's true, that's great.
Yeah. So yeah, just to clarify, the question is, it is unclear if we can restrict this to only single-family dwellings, primary dwelling, or whether the accessory dwelling units are allowed in a two-family or a three-family. And exterior architectural plans are required, engineering plans. Short-term rentals shall not be permitted in any accessory dwelling unit. We're going to put that, what defines that by, defined by PMR and the state law, whatever that's called.
Yeah, but that state law wasn't very clear.
Right.
And that's why I left it off, because if we define short-term rentals
Well, what if
Why don't we just put it in here?
What if we just say, take out number six and just have seven?
I'll change that.
I think we can keep them both.
Is there a difference, difference between rental and sole lease?
Not really, I just thought it'd be good to be clear.
It says a difference between what, and what?
Rentals and lease.
Yeah, so what if someone says, well, I'm not really leasing, and it's a short term, you know, it's somewhere in by the weekend, it's not a lease, it's through, you know, it's through a program, yeah, by the day, whatever.
By the hour.
So, so that's why, um, you know, I, I felt it just to be extra clear.
I would also leave short-term rentals, because that is the language that's allowed by the statute, is to prohibit short-term rentals.
That's true.
So.
So with the four months, though, that gets to the concern of people leasing or renting them for the summer, was brought up at last meeting. Didn't we want to avoid that?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's something you actually want to avoid. I mean, um, that's kind of historical, bro, England is, a lot of people along the coastline rent in the summer, and then they have winter rentals and rents in the winter, whether it be college students or people who might have to live in a campground or live somewhere else, but then they rent a place for, for the winter to kind of.
People who are building houses and can't live in them.
There you go, that's another example. But, so that's, that's typically, that's why I didn't want to make it too long, so people can't do that, but, so that's why I put four months in discussion.
So I guess, to me, it gets down to, are we, is Manchester and the state looking to create these shorter-term rentals for four months, or are we looking for smaller-scale housing? That's what we're looking for. And so I think if we're accommodating these shorter-term rentals, we're not doing what we're setting out to do.
Well, I think it does, um, it's not everybody who creates a accessory unit is going to use only probably a small percentage, but actually.
Don't forget, our purpose here tonight is to move this to a public hearing, where we're gonna get input on these things from, and we'll have.
Yeah, see how people feel about it. Yeah, I.
I, yeah, we could change it to six for, for the purposes of, because you could always make it.
You know, I was making more or less, as long as we kind of have some sense.
Yeah, let's change it to six.
So then one more question I have that's along those lines, are borders allowed in ADUs? Because our bylaw currently just says, in a single-family dwelling, which an ADU will become a single-family dwelling.
Yeah.
That's a good point. So we might want to, yeah, if people feel this way, to say, the, allowing these for borders.
That's a good point.
Oh, it's only allowed in a single-family dwelling. This is not bad.
Oh, yeah, it is, because an ADU becomes a single dwelling unit.
That should be clarified.
Yeah.
Okay.
It might be a question for town council, because I think it is important, we clearly don't want that, so.
Okay. Why don't we put a prohibition on borders and again get town council?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
How would you define?
I don't know. I'm actually, well.
They are allowed in our current bylaw.
So one of the thoughts I'm having is that we'll probably need to hold two public hearings. We may not, this one may not be ready for, we may need to get town council's input on a number of these things, and we'll have the, the public hearing for this on the second meeting in March, which should still be time to get it to the warrant. Right? We need to check that, that's the issue. Might not be enough time, that's the issue.
I do, would like, I'm sorry, now I'm, may I?
Go ahead, I'm looking right at you.
I would like to have something that says that you can't use ADUs as short-term rentals. I recognize that many of these other rec, uh, suggestions, much of this language is valuable, but if we're going to run any risk of not getting something on the warrant that says specifically, no short-term rentals, then just cut back on this, get something simple, get it on the warrant, get that passed, come back in the fall or whenever, deal with the rest. So if you can't get this in shape, that you're willing to have it on the first hearing, come up with something.
Come up with a, a addition to, to, uh, somewhere that says short-term rentals are not allowed in ADUs. That's a good suggestion.
So I would say that the changes we're discussing of the language are minor, if, if the council says change this or this or that, or strike this, they're relatively minor to this entire article, so, um, I, I don't see a reason to put off of this for the first meeting in March.
Yeah, okay. The other thing, Ann, is that there are some really important things with these protected use, ADUs, that they must comply with floodplain and groundwater service, that's, that's allowed in the regulations, we think.
Yes.
Historic. The other one is the setbacks, do we have setbacks in here?
Yes, this is the last one.
But, the setbacks.
Number 13.
13. Yeah, the setbacks, that they comply with the primary building setbacks. All of those are, um, the, allowed by the regulations, we believe, and are making those protected use, ADUs. I think people are worried about this, and I think we are, I think this draft, the intent of this draft, whether it does it yet or not, I'm not sure, but is to recognize they're allowed by law and to regulate them to the extent that we're allowed to.
I understand your concern over short-term rental, but other people would not care about that, but they would care about some of these other things. And so.
I'm saying, cut it, I'm saying, if it gets confusing and late.
Okay, yeah, well, let's also post, Mark, how about to Ann's point, a draft article that simply says, accessory dwelling units may not be used for short-term rentals. That way, we will have held the hearing for that article. We don't need to take that article to town meeting if we can get this one in good shape, but then we have, will have held that hearing for that purpose. Makes sense?
No.
No. Yeah, no, I, I, I don't think you should try and do that unless there's some, I mean, you've got it right in here, and so, and the rest of this article, I mean, yeah, it's important, but it's in here, so I don't understand why you would pull it out and separate it.
Oh, not pull it out, have an alternate article available.
About.
About, with the hearing, whether we put it on the warrant or not, we can decide in four weeks. The problem is with the three-week posting at the crickets and the date that we need to get the warrant done, you can't.
So you want me to, uh, try and figure out where, where I would put that in the zoning bylaw as far as a restriction?
That's the problem here.
Yeah, it really is.
Why not add a line to the table that says, that says accessory dwelling units used a short-term rental, no, 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 no?
Uh, well, what it could do.
I don't know.
I'd have to think, there's, there's a way to do it, um, probably. Is to define, is to define, is to define short-term rentals.
That's true.
In the definitions, and then say, short-term rentals are not permitted in accessory dwelling units.
How about, not only as a zoning bylaw, but as a general bylaw?
Right. And then general bylaw.
Well, I know that there was some discussion, Greg, about it, changing your general bylaw.
The general bylaw on short-term rentals has problems.
Okay.
So, but that can't be changed? See, you're trying to do your thing here, and we want you to do our thing there.
Yeah. I would like to get some things out of the general bylaw that are more housing-related, something land use-related, but.
We've been trying to get them out.
Well, the general bylaw is gonna let it be regulated throughout life, whereas the zoning is when they're building it.
Okay.
So I, so I could do that, so I could leave it in here, and we can post this for a public hearing and have it reviewed by council, et cetera. But kind of a belt and suspenders would be to add a definition of ADUs to the zoning, and at the end of the definition, say, ADUs are prohibited from, I mean, short-term rentals are prohibited in ADUs. And just that way, in the definition, it's very clear that can't have ADUs, and then this just reiterates that.
The other thing is, if you post this whole thing, and we opt to only pull out number whichever, six as the warrant article, I would argue that you would let it posted for that.
Can you regulate with the definition?
Let's ask town council.
Yeah, yeah, you, you can do that, it's not really the preferred way, but since it's something very specific.
Well, it just gets us into shape, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It just gets us into shape.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we're, are there any other, so Mary mentioned earlier, site plan review.
Oh, I have a lot of stuff.
Well, site plan review, so in the public hearing, any bylaws that you're looking at that predate the regulations may no longer be valid. So the, apparently wall fam, there was an example given at the public hearing for the regulations, and they said that wall fam said you can't do, that you had to have site plan review, but you didn't have to have it for the primary dwelling. And so they, they gave a whole list of things that towns have done to try to discourage accessory dwelling units, and they were giving examples that they were not compliant with the regulations. There was a whole list, I don't know what they were. So, I mean, I have them in my other notes, but.
Yeah, that, what she's, I think what she, to clarify what Sarah's saying is, you can't require anything more different from what you do for a primary residence.
Right.
So if we don't allow, if we don't have site plan review for a primary residence, we can't have it for an accessory dwelling. Unfortunately, I wish we could.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, so, um, you know, I've seen all these scenarios where, um, towns don't want an accessory dwelling unit in front of the primary. Can we regulate that? They don't want it, um, what were some of the other examples that?
Well, you know what you were, so if they comply, so if they comply with setback, then they can build the addition. If they're in a historic district, though, it needs to get reviewed and approved, as Bobby said, by historic, so, um, but, you know, if you're having a one-acre parcel on the edge of town somewhere, and you want to stick it right in front, as long as you comply with setback.
If it's the standard, but maybe.
If it's the standard size.
So, so certainly on the, um, larger, we could include all of those kinds of things.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, because they had, they had pictures, and you know, if it was within the house or attached or detached, but just quickly getting back to, to this, uh, just on a higher level, why are we getting away from having the structure of a bylaw that has kind of like a purpose, applicability, um, things like, um, just kind of dove right in? And then I, I don't see even where we're clarifying that this is 900 square feet or half of the, you know, you referenced the CMR 71.02, but again, residents are gonna have no clue what that means.
They changed CMR 120, they changed rules, make it bigger, or make it, um, get rid of some of their changed, say, it's now larger, not the smaller two, um, by, I referenced the.
But I think what, I mean, you know, I may just have to end up that the planning board in the future is just gonna have to deal with these things, because I just don't know how you can read a bylaw and have no idea what the size or the limitations or formulas or anything. You know, you can reference both, but I think we have to say that it's 900 square feet or half of the primary dwelling unit, whichever is less.
You don't have to, I mean, it's board's choice that they want to put that forth.
I think Mary's right, I think we should say what the state law says.
Yeah.
And I, and I also think they, instead of calling them accessory units standard, we should call them standard accessory dwelling, it's very confusing to say accessory dwelling units large.
Sads, standard accessory dwelling, sadist, yeah. I'm sorry, it's getting.
No, that's good.
So then, and can I just throw some things out, and you can either, so, um, so is it clear enough that this is, is complying with the primary building requirements for setbacks and lot coverage?
Yeah, number 13.
Primary building.
We should have lot coverage.
Probably should go lot coverage, but that's, it's there anyway, but might as well say it.
Well, yeah, because it, the maximum lot coverage allowed in the district.
And dimensional requirement.
Yep.
Well, they can't be, oh, yeah, never mind, yes.
I would add about the borders, um, on line, on number eight, I would be tempted to take out only, I would just say one parking space.
I agree with you.
Where are we gonna, and I would also note the EOHLC reporting requirement, and who's gonna do it?
I think they removed that.
They reduced it.
They reduced it.
But I don't think it belongs in zoning.
Yeah.
It just says, we'll keep a record of each permit applied for, approved, denied.
And then upon request.
So that'd be the building inspector.
Um, okay.
But I don't think it belongs in zoning.
Yeah.
So if this is for all of them, okay, thank you. So you say, state one parking, no, one parking space if it's greater than a half mile? And then are you reliant on the other bylaw for the additional parking?
That's correct.
Yes. But then it's not part of general require?
No.
So are you mixing general requirements for standard ADU and large ADU?
No, the, the general requirements apply to all.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Are the 1 through 13?
Yeah.
Okay, but then you mix in the parking for the.
Yeah, no, well, I didn't think, you need to create another section for just one requirement, so I put it, I just put it in there.
I'm just wondering if we can separate it somehow because
Yeah.
Because then this makes it seem like there's only one space needed if you're further out than a half mile, but then the large ADU says you need two.
I mean, I don't, yeah, um, if I can add 9.1, 9.3, say, use regulations for standard ADUs and then have this one line, but that's all I'll have there.
I would suggest that we focus on the content and not worry about how it's organized. So for right now, that we're, so I think that the content issue is should we, we can't change just background, uh, standard small protected use, whatever they're called, uh, ADUs. And the regulations say we cannot require any parking within a half mile of the train. And we can only require a maximum of one for beyond a half mile.
But we have to actually have it in here.
And it has to be in the regulation, in this step, in this zoning. And then the proposal for larger is that we have two parking spaces for the large accessory dwelling unit. Which is, um, the current proposal. We can, so I think where it goes and how it's organized, to me, is not state marked. Okay, I'm off with that a little bit, and then we're going to send it to council.
If, if you want, I can take that one item out.
Put it.
Regulations for state ADUs standard, and I can move number eight to here, but it's the only.
Requirements in that same general section, right?
Well, you want these dimensional requirements to apply to both, so you'd want to leave it in the first section. I just don't know whether there's anything else aside from this one thing related to parking that should be.
For the smaller ones?
Yeah. The parking one, you have to say, or it's zero everywhere.
Could you say, could you just say, um?
Well, I can do that.
Well.
That's not a big deal, Mary. Mary, it's, it's easy.
Okay, I'll go on with my list. So ADU dwelling and single-family dwelling shall remain on same lot and shall not be divided into separate lots. Should we clarify that, or is that a given somewhere else in our bylaw?
Are you talking about condos? Talking about the condos, because that's.
No.
No, I'm talking about, you know, say somebody had a big lot in B, right? And you could do, um, you know, you did an accessory dwelling unit and.
If they have enough frontage and enough acreage, then.
They could do it.
They could.
They could do it and build a second house. Why build an accessory dwelling unit? They have sort of like the existing bylaw that we have, which is so silly, which says you can only do an accessory dwelling unit if you have a lot that's twice as big as what's required. Well, if you had a lot that's twice as big, you can create two lots and build two houses on it.
You need all the setbacks, okay. So no ADU shall be sold separately as a condominium or otherwise.
I don't think that's allowed by state law, though, is it?
That's not allowed in the protected use one.
It isn't.
Well, we, yeah. We have number 12. The accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated from the type of the primary unit.
You got a condo?
Yeah, that would be a condo.
I don't think that's, I think that's a weakness.
No, I don't, there's not some in there.
Did you take it out?
Yeah, they, yep. They changed that, you're right.
No, it was in that red line.
And we can't state a minimum, so per the laws, that's correct. So we, the town recently sold a bunch of those 716 square foot homes. And then, so then they could build a 358 square foot ADU if they have the space. Do we care? Yeah.
I think we care, but.
But the statute says they can do it.
Okay.
No, no, we wouldn't limit something like that.
Do we have a height limit based on our accessory structure of 25 feet?
The small ones can't be more restrictive than the primary dwelling.
So for either, do we have a height restriction?
35 feet.
Well, in the accessory, if they're in an accessory building.
It would have to comply with accessory building.
Yeah, it's an accessory.
Like if they were going to do an addition.
Wasn't the state saying you can't be more restrictive than?
In the small ones.
In the small.
Well, for the big ones, you could, sure.
Yeah. So, but on the big ones, are we going to say it's an accessory, so it's the 25 feet?
Yes, and the big ones, I think, well, when we get to it, I think I'd say you have to meet primary setback if you're going to do an addition.
Well, that's setbacks, but I'm talking height.
Well, they would, they would have to comply with.
I just want to make sure.
So the way he handled it here is on the large accessory structure constructed after the town meeting date must comply with the primary building setback requirements for an accessory unit to be located within the structure. Oh, that's the setbacks, doesn't deal with height. So the question is height.
So, yeah, so we have an accessory structure, height limit of 25, so I'm just asking if that applies to ADUs.
It would, because it's still an accessory structure.
And have we said about the entrance, the side or rear entrance for these, if they're within the structure? That we want the entrances to be in the side or the rear?
We should say that.
We had that, we wrote that in the draft we had from before, so I can.
That's for the protected use ones?
No, for the.
No, for the.
Oh, for the one, oh, you're jumping ahead. For the protected use ones, I'm not sure that's.
Well, we can encourage it maybe, but you can't require it.
And then we clarified, I believe, last meeting, that if somebody wants to convert a garage or an existing unit, that it can only happen if that garage meets the setbacks for the, what would be for primary, correct?
We would finesse that a little bit, saying that the dwelling portion has to meet the habitable portion.
So, well, that's.
That was the proposal.
Yeah, for the protected ones, I don't think you can.
Well, that's not more restrictive than what we do for single families, so I think that's important for abutters.
So you're saying if you have a garage, you want to convert the garage? Have to do what?
You can't do it.
You can't, because it doesn't meet the setbacks.
It doesn't meet the primary setback.
If it doesn't meet the primary building setbacks, the accessory unit, garage can't be converted to, I don't think that's.
That's what was discussed last meeting, and I won't speak for her, but Sarah Malish said that you couldn't convert a garage if it doesn't meet what we currently have for setbacks in that district. Or that's what I was proposing and I'm still proposing that, that if we have structures that are now going to be dwelling units as opposed to garages, that for neighborhoods, abutters, that we would want to keep the setbacks.
You want to say something like accessory structures that do not conform to setbacks are not permitted be converted to an ADU?
So they, they must comply with all dimensional requirements of the district for dwelling.
I think that. I think that might be, I'm not sure. I don't have my, uh.
Yeah, I can't. So, I don't know if you're going to do that, but I'm marking that as an important one.
No.
You're marking it what?
As an important one for my side. Then any proposed detached ADU or addition ADU that creates a new nonconformity or increased nonconformity shall be prohibited. I don't think. Didn't see anything about nonconformity. Because we can do it for single family, so.
I think we do it with a special permit.
Okay, here we go, yeah.
Well, I think you should be able to do it with accessory units.
It says, uh, for pre-existing non-conforming structures.
Yeah.
Right? We may not prohibit the development of a protected use ADU in an existing structure or principal dwelling or a lot due to nonconformance that could be used for or converted into a protected use ADU in conformance with the building code and state law.
Right, so that's, can't say that garage can't.
Yeah, if it's already there.
No, that, that was an existing, that was.
Yeah, for existing.
For an internal.
No.
Uh, not just the internal, in an existing structure or principal dwelling. So that garage, an existing structure. This is on the last page of, uh, regulation, under historic districts, the next thing.
In an existing. Non. Okay, I, no, yeah, I saw, thank you. Yeah, okay.
So for a large one, you could do it, though?
Yes, for a large, we could do it, okay. All detached ADUs must be of a permanent nature on a permanent foundation as defined by the Mass Building Code and with permanent utility connections. Temporary structures such as a trailer, RV, or other prefabricated temporary structures shall not qualify. So that gets to, do we want, can somebody say this trailer is now an ADU? Or can we put some, hey, if it's going to be an ADU and you can have it by right, it has to be affixed to the ground?
I think that we can say that, because they said, um, they said you can do modular homes, but you can't, but they didn't say that trailers were, they didn't, they were silent on the, on the mobile home.
They, yeah, they actually made that a little more, little more restrictive, yeah.
I think we could try to say that.
I think we can say that, yeah. It has to be, uh.
I may have to pare that language down, but can you send me that language? Because I think, I think where it references the building code, I think we can't really, can't regulate.
Because everything has to, right.
By zoning, but I think the, some of the other language.
Yeah, it has to have a.
I can modify that.
Well, where are we?
And I'm not coming up with this stuff, I'm just plucking it from other towns, so.
But it is a concern, we don't want something like a camper van to become a name.
Yeah, you don't want someone to stick a little breezeway and call it, call the camper van, yes, the ADU.
Almost done. Once an ADU has been added, so 900 feet or larger, the ADU shall never be enlarged beyond the 900 feet or the other larger, you know, that was permitted.
I think the, don't the regulations say if you want to enlarge it, you have to have a special, you could, you can require a special permit?
No, that would kick off the special.
Yeah, that would mean that it becomes a large one, right?
Do we want to say that in our bylaw, or are we relying that people are going to go, or that?
I think the building.
Board's 10 years from now, which hopefully none of us are on. References back and, or the building inspector.
What we could say is something like, if you seek to expand, then it becomes.
Subject to the regulations of the.
For the large ADUs, whatever we're.
If you build a 600 square foot one, then you want to expand it to 900 square feet?
That's still protected.
Yeah, that's true.
No, if, if your primary house is only 1,200 square feet.
Well, yes, but.
So if you wanted to go larger on the 600, you would have to get a special.
Sure, in that case, but if you had a 2,000 square foot house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe just simply saying any addition, any ADU that is going to exceed 900 square feet requires a special permit.
Yeah.
Well, but again, that's, that's 600 square feet.
I think that, we're sort of covered on that, yeah.
You don't want to say that because, let's say, this next section doesn't pass. Referencing something that doesn't exist.
That's the problem.
Yeah, I, I think that's kind of.
I think the point is, is that people need to know that if they do a, you know, the 900 or the 600 by right, they can't then a year from now just say, oh, I'm going to add a few hundred feet onto it.
I think when they come in for a building permit, they'll find that.
Again, this is just towns, because they're trying to make it as clear as possible. Any legally enacted townwide building moratoriums will apply to all new ADU proposals as well.
That cannot be allowed for the protected use. That, there's, there's specific language in the regulations about that, but we could do. But a moratorium, when you write it, would be.
Why would you, you either allow the larger ones or you don't, so. Moratoriums are generally put in place when, as temporary measures for you to craft a bylaw, and you'd be specific in time.
Right, or for.
Purpose.
For a regulatory, somewhat, yeah, wastewater.
And do we say anything about driveways, or are we just silent?
We're silent on that. I mean, it's meant to be accessories, it's not driveway.
So can we say, you know, it must exist in.
Yeah, we use the same driveway.
Yeah, you can, we could say that. I don't think there's anything that would prohibit us from saying, you know, existing, uh, no.
Well, we already.
ADUs shall use the existing access.
Existing driveway entrance.
Yeah.
To Mary's point about purpose, we probably should have a purpose, do it all the other.
Yeah, we just.
Really have written in this, but it doesn't, it's not even under the accessory dwelling section. But, uh.
The purpose is to comply with the state.
Well, I think that's probably what we should say.
Well, and again, it's easy to pluck from other towns that have already created this, but, yeah, it's, you know, it's a one paragraph purpose and then applicability, and then go into the, the regulations. Just a little more format to it.
The other issue that Sarah Malish suggested, back in my notes, is that the short-term rental, um, prohibition be recorded with.
Do that?
Do that.
We can ask town council.
Well, the purpose is that an existing bylaw, I'm pretty.
I think it's too, I think it's too restrictive.
Yeah, yeah.
That purpose, yeah, no, I, yeah.
Right, what's?
Which page is it, Chris?
Uh, 64.
Following all this, Peter?
A little part of. It just seems like. So, this is, oh, 64.
9.1.1.
Um, I just, I thought it.
We had a purpose in our, the one we drafted.
We did.
I'll find it, Peter. I'll find the, um, the one, the purpose and the entrance.
If you really want, I mean, the purpose is very similar to A, and you can just leave it at that, you don't need all these other things that, you know, I mean, that's really the purpose is to facilitate the.
I like that.
Availability of suitable housing for, you know, us, yeah.
Well, I would actually do A and E.
Same B.
E, E.
Let's say what they are, the purpose is to facilitate availability of suitable private housing for moderate and low-income elderly and younger citizens of the town, while preserving the existing character of single-family districts, and to ensure that all accessory dwelling units are created will comply with the building code's health, safety, and fire regulations.
Because people seem to be worried about that.
Yeah.
I mean, not that our bylaw.
Does that.
It's, that's not what our zoning does, but, I don't know. If we're gonna have A, we could have E, but I like having A.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just say provide the, preserving the character of existing districts, pick up the word.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And of course, top line.
Yeah, oh, we, we work that.
Okay, so the next steps on this, these two are gonna be, gonna rework them, and council.
Post the public hearing.
Post the public hearing, we may have to do a second one for that, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, if these changes that we discussed are reasonably sufficient as a public hearing for the few little tweaks.
Yeah, we can get input on some reasons, yeah.
You know, and council doesn't have, right, a large portion of it, and that, your hearing should be sufficient, you know. If you want a whole second hearing, I would say, that we're final, how to submit, very definitive, our final things to the select board, then we can post maybe a public hearing just to double.
Right.
You know, check our box for afterwards for early April for all of us, just to remember.
I think we need to do a public meeting, too, to, yeah.
Won't be able to really change anything.
You know, we, all okay with the large ones being limited to 1,500 square.
1,500 is what we suggested, but.
Can I make some comments on the larger ones?
Sure.
So, since we're removing our current accessory dwelling unit bylaws, replacing it, and we've had issues with our current accessory dwelling bylaw, um, so, I guess, just going top to bottom, I still think 1,500 square feet is large, and we're saying these are accessory and that, you know, there's many houses in town that are over 1,000 square, so, we'll find out from residents, but I think that's high.
So, should it have a, to your point, should it have a, or not more than half of the primary unit?
Well, so I'm gonna.
Something that's relative, so makes it not larger than the primary.
It's like a carriage house, I mean.
Yeah, so I was gonna get to what we currently have, is that, you know, 35% from exploratory, or, you know, some such calculation, and to just blanketly say, you know, can't exceed a certain thing, so you're, we're still opening it up to, you could have a 2,000 square foot, I'm sorry, you could have a, um, 1,500 square foot house and a 1,400 and 999 accessory dwelling unit, right, like, that's what we've been trying to avoid and.
So, you want it, like, relative in size to, so.
Why don't we keep the same?
So, if you have a large lot with a massive, and you have that carriage house, that's pretty big, to be able to.
Yeah.
So, that formula, that 35, you know, whichever formula.
Why don't we keep the same, just to try to keep it parallel, so it's not like two different standards, if we kept it as half the primary dwelling or 1,500, whichever is smaller? Just to keep it consistent.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
But I, I think it's a good point, too.
I would also, in my opinion, not have it in every district, so remove it from D1, D2, and G, but, you know, if we have, the standard has to be required in every district, and we've got the 3A, you know, that's all kinda settling in on D and G. So, I would, you know, our current ADU bylaw is just A, B, C, and E, and keep it that.
So.
Interesting, Olivia.
I think the reason why I have that is because two-family dwelling is allowed by right in the D1, and a special permit from the zoning board in D2, and what was the third district you mentioned?
G.
G is also by right in the G district, so, although it's ADU large, it's still another, you know, it's, it's smaller than what they could do by right in two of the districts for a special permit.
They essentially can do.
Those anyways.
Two-family without.
Two-family, we already defined, and that's different than an ADU, because this could be attached, detached, I mean, two-family has to be firewall attached, um.
Well, that's why we have it as a special permit in two of the three. I mean, maybe it should be a special permit under the G district as well, just in case someone does wanna do it attached.
So, my suggestion would, the districts that are already two-family, that we wouldn't also allow.
Right. An interesting thought.
And.
Um, and then.
Well, they still can have an ADU if they already have a two-family. The first part of the bylaw wouldn't allow that.
It's just about density in the districts, right? So, if you're allowing two-family by right, and somebody's got two-family, and then you're like, okay, now, um, now it's gonna not be a two-family next door, it's gonna be a detached ADU that, you know, it's. I think we're mixing a lot of things into a already very dense area of town, and I think we, it would benefit to slow that down a little bit.
Well, and they, to, then the, the stand, standard ADU is allowed by right, so.
Yeah, it's just large ones.
So, you're just saying the large ones.
So, Sarah Melish was just talking about whatever went on Harbor Street or Central One, whichever one it was, but, so, just kind of saying that.
Interesting thought.
It's an area of town that's. Has a lot. And. That you say about the two, two off-street.
Yeah, number four.
Two off-street, yeah.
I would just say two off-street parking spaces.
Add the word off-street.
Instead of just parking.
Cut that.
All right, I think those are good things to think about.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna move that one along.
Okay.
I'm gonna move us along. Um, yeah, so what, um, the next one on the agenda is the general district commercial use, so, we have talked about trying to address the, a requirement for commercial in the lower, in the, along the street.
First floor.
First floor, in order to, um, respond to the needs that we heard in the MBTI zoning, and create an opportunity for mixed use explicitly, not to try, you know, to try to rein in the pressure for easily developing allowed two-family with special permit, three-family in our downtown, which could potentially get rid of commercial property, commercial space along our streetscape. I think there's still a need, an opportunity to do that as well, but it's complicated, more complicated than ADU perhaps, how deep, how, how do you define mixed use, and it's my opinion that we don't have time to get something together for spring.
Yeah.
That said, I think we should be working on it with a planning exercise, because I think we have both an opportunity and a vulnerability that we want to be planful for.
I think, yeah, I think, um, just get people thinking about, it's an opportunity to make things better downtown, rather than an opportunity to, you know, have wild development, I mean, the, aren't, we don't own the buildings downtown, I mean, one person owns quite a few, and we have no say over who can own property or not, they're all privately held, um, buildings, a private person or a commercial entity can own them, and so, this is our only tool to say what they can do with their property, and we should try and figure out the tools we want to use to get to the result that, you know, people want to have, which sounded like not have every building converted to all residential. It has to be a balance, I think, I think people want a balance.
Right, I think people assume that, that existing commercial will, a bank, for example.
Be there, right.
Will stay a bank or a commercial use, and that may or may not be the case, just as an example, so, but I just don't think we have time.
No.
No, and in fact, it turns out it's probably a much bigger problem than, zoning can be part of a solution, but it's not the solution, and the solution's gonna require marketing by the brokers in town to attract businesses, it's gonna, we have CST coming in, which is gonna have an impact, I think, um, public improvements can be a big part of it, the downtown improvement committee can be, you know, it's gotta be a partner in this as well.
They definitely wanna be part of it, too.
Yeah, so I think that we just got one tool in this bigger toolbox that we have to coordinate with the other stakeholders.
So, Chris had found a model bylaw from Cape Cod, which we'll share around, and maybe we can take some time at a meeting to actually walk through this kind of interesting slideshow that raises a whole bunch of planning questions in the abstract as a start, and then I know Mark is thinking about getting a planning grant to undertake this comprehensively, so those things are coming, but we're not gonna have that one, and I think, that's my feeling, and we don't have a draft and.
Yeah, it's a long, it's a really, ideally, this is a long-term project, but we do a comprehensive look at the key district.
I guess my concern was that it's a long-term project with a near-term pressure.
Yes.
But maybe less near than, we just, April's coming quickly. Okay, so let's move on from that, um, to us, I'm gonna take a moment, Sarah Pierce, you have your hand up?
Yes, hi, thank you so much for taking my comments, Sarah Pierce, Knight Front Street. I just wanted to say thank you for taking a pause for the long-term planning with the commercial and the residential in the downtown. We definitely have, as a resident, I can say, it feels like there is a ton being put on Manchester's plate as far as development and our future, we have laws that we have to deal with, the 40A we have to deal with, the ADU by right we have to deal with, CST is approved, and that's their own entity, we still have to deal with that, but that's three huge things right there, we have the 40B that's pending, we don't know what will happen with that, but I think what we have to deal with is incredibly important to pay attention to, and use our time to figure out the finite pieces of whether ADUs are, you know, 900 square feet, I would go, at this point, if you have to make a decision, I would go with the minimum, and then go from there, because you can always add, but you can't take away. I am concerned with enforcement with all of this, who's overseeing this, we have one building inspector and multiple projects going on, I'm also concerned with infrastructure and how we're gonna support all of this, so I, I really do applaud your board for taking a pause on the downtown commercial area, that's not something we have to do right now, and really should take some time and think that through, and do it the right way, so that's my comment, thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess, my, my only response to that is, we are gonna take it up, because we worry that in the absence of rules, we'll get whatever, whatever we'll get, so, we do wanna think about what we want, but not tonight, but thank you, um, okay, the last one on the agenda is flood, hey, um, so.
So, this is another one that we have to do to bring forth to town meeting, and people won't be able to get flood insurance anymore, um, so, a, um, final version of this was sent around by the state for towns to modify, basically, by putting in their town's information, referencing the correct flood zone, districts, so and so forth, so I've done that to this version here, meant to replace our existing 10.2, and, um, this is very similar to a version that was reviewed, I went back into our old meeting packets, the last time it was discussed was in August of 23, and it was reviewed by council, um, and the board, I didn't go back to see how many meetings you talked about this, but it was reviewed by council and the state, so this is very similar, I believe the state's adjusted it a little bit since then, and I will, we can send it to council for a final review, but this essentially, like, there's stormwater or something that was, which was passed in the fall town meeting, that we kind of have to put forward.
You made any modifications from the model bylaw that are, or is there any discretion that we can take?
Not really, um, there was, a couple different sections were based on the, our community, I had to. I had to, um, um, reference certain, uh, things, but perhaps in. But, yeah, it's pretty much as, as given to us by the state. Um, I do have to remove a few of the flood zones. I did get a confirmation that a few of these zones don't exist. So we have five zones and there are seven or eight zones listed in here. So I have to make a little adjustment to that. And it's been sent to the state to re-review, so.
Okay. And is the, I know one of the questions we had talked about at some length before is that the, um, this designates the inspector of buildings to be the official floodplain administrator. Is that standard?
Yes, I, I believe that's what our current bylaw says.
Is there any other option?
Some town administrator could be conservation commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, apparently the town can designate anyone they choose. I don't know. I mean, that's the person who makes, who it makes sense to him because he does, the person who issues building permit. So.
At least we have one. We don't have a conservation.
Right, sure.
Well, that's sooner, that's our town administrator, so.
Yeah, well, we have a conservation agent starting tomorrow. So I just, but I would, I would not designate the conservation agent because really is a building code issue, sorry, in so many ways.
So the purpose of a, I mean, it says to protect public safety and eliminate losses, but, but it's really to keep people from increasing flooding?
Well, that's also another goal.
The goal.
You know, is, is obviously if you have land in a floodplain, for example, the back of 7th Central, that back portion is in the floodplain that those buildings there displace the water, therefore increasing
Somebody else's flooding, right?
So that is one of the things that this would prohibit, just as if you was able to build there, he'd have to elevate the building to be above the floodplain. Things like you talked about, you talked about the utilities in the basement need to be, those need to be elevated above the flood elevation so that it don't get damaged in, if there was flooding in the basement, so.
The other thing is that the base flood elevation for subdivisions is for developments greater than 50 lots or five acres. Can we make that smaller? Because we're not likely to have 50 lots or even five acres. That's the number of 10. Can we make it five lots or?
So number nine requires.
Number 10 says proposed subdivisions of greater than 50 lots must provide technical data to determine base elevations for each developable parcel. I think we should have that be five lots.
I don't see why we couldn't make it more strict
Yeah.
than what the state requires, right? We couldn't make it less.
Right.
Mark, you know how many town buildings are in the floodplain? I know from the FEMA report that we have 94 properties in this floodplain. Do you know how many of them are town buildings?
Town building? Sorry, I don't, I know the parks, the parks are probably in the floodplain and sewer plant, parking lot. This building probably might be, um, but that's all I know.
Fire station.
Oh, fire station, yeah.
And then my only other comment would be that, so the building inspector, the appropriate fit, we have a very part-time building inspector and we keep adding on to his duties. And though I don't know that this gets triggered a whole lot, but, um, you know, I think there's some training involved with this, et cetera, and yearly training. So I, I just have concerns with that.
I can find out if our inspector has gone through the training that they have. So I would guess he probably has.
Could it be the town administrator or his designee? His designee, which would mean he could.
Town administrator does not have the time for the
Well, no, that's all, he designated.
The technical.
He designated the building inspector
Building inspector or.
Or the conservation commissioner, whatever he thinks is best qualified.
Yeah, that might be a better solution, a solution. Okay, um, great, thank you for getting, we've been talking about this one for a long time, so I'm glad we finally have a draft. It seems it actually goes straightforward.
So I will send this to council as well.
Yeah.
I will put in the town administrator designee, I will check with the state that's allowed. If not, I will turn it back to the town administrator. And I will put the five lots or five acres.
Yeah, I think that's fine, five acres is fine, but it's the five lot, I mean, we're not gonna fix.
Instead of it.
50 is a really large trigger.
And I will fix the flood zones to be specific.
Great.
The one thing about the designee idea, I mean, what if the town administrator says, okay, it's gonna be the town clerk or the head of parks and that, or, you know.
Or you.
Yeah, we might, we, yeah.
That's why I'm afraid.
Might wanna put some guardrails about who takes the designee. But I'm sure town council.
Yeah, let's, we can think about this.
Yeah.
Okay, it's 10 o'clock. I've, I've lost my meeting again, I don't see any hands up, so I'm gonna continue. We have, I'm gonna skip liaison reports, it's late. We have two minutes to approve. I'd love to get those approved. We have the minutes of November 25th, 2024. Do I have a motion to?
Yeah, I moved them to be approved.
Okay, Mary, I don't think you were here.
Yeah, but I just, as for clarification, I thought the meeting minutes said six voted yes tonight, but there was only five people in the meeting.
You are correct about that, that is, I saw that in them. It should be five, five voted, I believe.
Of course.
No, I think it was just.
No, it was, Mary was the only one to have.
Yeah, someone was on Zoom or something.
Yeah.
Uh, Chris was on Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we were incorrect when, Sarah. Yeah, it was second. Okay. So Chris has moved and I think Sue seconded the approval of the November 25th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Peter? Peter votes yes, all unanimous, thank you. Um, and then the other one is, um.
1:13.
1:13.
I don't think those were.
I don't think it was.
They're not in there, you know.
I, I.
They're on the agenda, but not in the folder.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so we do not have that minutes. Any other issues from the board? Any additional public comment? Hearing is seeing none. Thank you, everybody, this is a good meeting. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for hanging in there, Peter.
Good night, everybody.
All right.